Good morning. Good morning, we have Zach from Potts and Associates for our legislative update.
Well, good morning, how are we doing today?
We made it.
Well, hey, you know, that's a great start. It's better than having everything frozen, I imagine.
There's a lot of broken things.
Oh, gosh, yeah, no, I understand. I'm gonna be over in Spokane here tomorrow to see Kathy McMorris Rogers. She'll be in town, so talking about fire relief and disaster relief and stuff, so I'll be there. I'll be there, we'll see what it's like. A couple of quick highlights here for this year, just kind of making notice stuff. WASCAC has basically, you know, kind of like they said, got their agenda accomplished last year. So the policy staff has had a lot of freedom to really work on a few other things and kind of position WASCAC in the counties for maybe next year and kind of chime in on a few more policy components that have been, you know, secondary kind of priorities of the counties. As you guys know, I think we're still trying to figure out at WASCAC how we reconcile urban versus rural policy, specifically around the 1% property tax lid. I think that we're gonna probably figure that out over the interim, things we've done in the past. You know, have an urban caucus, rural caucus, et cetera. I don't know what the answer is, but I think that we will be able to figure that out. And it's really important, talking to the legislators over here, that we keep the association together, because it really does give a lot of leverage when you can come in as a rural county and say, hey, the urban county's like this. Or vice versa, as an urban county and say, the rural counties are okay with this. So we'll get there. The other next thing is internally inside the caucuses here. The Republicans are kind of playing defense, they're being very, very strategic. They're kind of trying to figure out how to even get a bill run right now. So there's, you know, it was such a Democratic majority, and I'm not one way or the other, but I will say that it is very difficult and the policy is never what I would call outstanding when either party has a super majority in both houses and then has the governor. It really, there's no need to even communicate with each other. Now that said, the House Democrats are split, big time. These initiatives that were filed really cut at the core of everything that the Ds have run for the last probably three, four, maybe five years. And it is really, really irritating them, and they're in a bad spot, being that it's an election year. And what this is doing on the election cycle is it's probably going to bring more people out to vote because of the initiatives. And I think that the D side of the caucus is thinking that's not necessarily gonna help them. So they're in a real bad spot. Either they do nothing and let the initiative go, or they fix it and roll back a lot of their champion policies here, or they halfway fix it and anger people more. So it's really just a tough spot. But they are still putting out quite a bit of stuff. One of the things that I included in the update that seems really weird, doesn't seem like it would even speak to counties, is House Bill 2094 and 2095. These two are talking about gift cards. And if you, basically, it says if you don't use your gift card, that money would then revert back to the state. The legislators are looking at this going like, hey, there's $100 million a year that we may be able to capture because of unused gift cards, et cetera. It's not logistically feasible. I don't think it's gonna happen. Just to get past the logistics, give you an example, you buy a Home Depot gift card, travel down to Arizona, spend your Home Depot gift card, how in the heck are they gonna know? Right? So, I mean, just that logistical concern is probably gonna kill the bill. But the language in this bill is really concerning, and once it's been written, you know, they might come back to it. The principle that we're looking out here for is personal property seizure. Basically, it's, oh, you haven't used that in so long, you must not want it anymore. The state's gonna take it for the public good, et cetera. Let's take this away from gift cards and put this towards maybe a car that you've had parked on the street for, let's just say, 61 days. They might say, well, you're clearly not using that car, you don't need that car, we're gonna take it, sell it, and use the money for the state. That's kind of the slippery slope that we're looking at. It is a little bit scary, but I thought I'd bring that to your guys' attention. Like I said, I don't think it's gonna move, but it's language that I suggest we watch. Additionally, Representative Kretz has got two Wolfbells, 1423 and 1424. He's asked for, you know, members of the area to come up, specifically northeastern Washington. Anybody who's got tribal interests, et cetera, in the area, you would love to have people testify on his bills. Those are on Friday. Last on the schedule was at 10 o'clock in House, Ag, and Natural Resources. They may change the committee time. You can testify remotely, but if you have anybody in the, you know, the cattle industry, or, you know, hunting advocates, or elected officials that might want to testify, either let me know or let Representative Kretz know, because he would really like to have some support from the area for these bills. The bills really are kind of filling a gap, you know, one spot is helping the tribes out, because the tribes do a lot of enforcement and removal and monitoring, and they don't get compensated for it at all. And the other one really is dealing with kind of the gap there where their wolves are federally delisted. And there's not a lot of really good policy and procedure in that area. So he's basically engaging the county commissioners within those areas to come to the table, and that could be a really good precedent statewide. The other one I'm getting a lot of comments about here is 5843. This is concerning security breaches of election systems and election-related systems. On that one, definitely have a look at it, have your attorney look at it, and let me know if you like it, don't like it, don't care, have any specific questions. There's quite a few elements to that that you probably want to look at. A good bill that we kind of like right now is 6120. This one is the urban rural or wildland urban interface, the WUI code. And it does a couple of things. Number one, it will help better map the fire map and fire risk analysis across the state using really good data, not just an estimate from somebody, you know, a staffer in Olympia. And additionally, it will limit the WUI areas, so they won't be able to expand them in the future, which is a pretty big positive for us at this point. Let's see, the other one that I wanted to kind of talk about a little bit is I'm getting some questions on House Bill, or sorry, Senate Bill 6029. And this is talking about accessory dwelling units outside of the urban growth areas. A couple of counties have already made some ordinances based on 1337, I believe it was, last year, talking about ADUs. This bill actually, it's not permissive, it's mandatory. Where there's another one is 2026, I believe, that comes in here and, no, sorry, 2126, that is permissive. That would be that kind of the House version of this bill. But 6029 is not permissive. I don't know if it's gonna move, but have a look at that one. I don't know if it would go kind of contrary to any ordinances you guys may have made, but that one could cause you a few troubles if that is the case. I've had a couple of questions about Senate Bill 5978. This one is talking about OSPI, Office Superintendent to Public Instruction, talking about when the school districts take a loan from the county. I've had some questions. The auditors aren't really liking this one. There's a question is, well, what happens if a school district defaults? Who's liable for that? Right now, there's not really any clear distinction. So that one's kind of a question right now. It did have a hearing. I don't know if they're gonna execute it or not, but it's something to look at. It's a big deal. Part of the problem is they're putting $10 million into an account to cover those loans. That doesn't even cover King County's need. So we're kind of going, well, I mean, why put the money there if it's not needed? So let's see, there are a couple others. There was one other one here. It's Senate Joint Resolution 8208. And this is enshrining the right to hunt and fish in the state constitution. Kind of have it on pretty good authority that this one's probably gonna move forward. I don't know exactly when, but have a look at that one. I think it's a pretty good, you know, in terms of outdoor recreation, hunting, things like that, getting that protected. Because we know that there's definitely some factions that would like to see hunting go away. And I know that a lot of our local economies definitely are benefiting from those hunting activities. So that's what I've got right now. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Zach, this is Commissioner Anderson. Can you talk a little bit about the small engine bill? I know there was a lot, we had a lot of discussion on it at WASCAC meeting.
No, yeah, that's a fun little one. So that one, the big thing that they're looking at is at the local level, they want to ban all gas small engines because they're polluting. There are, they were very nice and gave an exemption for a chainsaw and something else. I mean, you know, things that you really just have to have a gas motor for, because the electric motors really just don't do it. The batteries don't last. The big concerns about this particular bill, number one, the cost to the county. I mean, you guys would have to, if you guys have any elect or gas engines by a certain date, you'd have to get rid of them and replace them all with electric. I guess you could probably sell them and get some of the costs back. But, you know, then you've got batteries and charging. There's a lot of infrastructure costs directly to you guys. It's not going to be as cheap as they think it will be. And, you know, unlike, say, King County, there's not always a place to plug stuff in in Clickatack County. You know, you get out in the middle of nowhere, and where's your power? It's gotta be on the truck or whatever. The other concern with it is they're trying to bring in, I've got the California's SORE standard, S-O-R-E. I'll be a little bit honest here, I haven't had a chance to look at the SORE standard, but I just can't imagine that a gas engine regulation coming out of California is something that we necessarily want in our backyard. So that's kind of where we stand on that one. I would definitely recommend not supporting this bill. It has had a hearing in committee, however, it has not moved. Based on the unpopular response to this bill, quite a bit of opposition from people in the rural areas in general. It may be too politically charged to push this bill through.
Zach, one other thing that came up during the meeting was with that bill with the SORE standard, I think the legislation directly ties it to if California changes their standards, it automatically changes our standards. And so there was a discussion on, you know, opposing it just for that, that we are in essence giving away our sovereignty to California.
There is a, yes, that tying it to another state's standard, especially one that I would say most people in the rural part of Washington State here would not agree with, is definitely a concern. That is a very good point. There's another couple of bills, and I don't know if they're gonna go anywhere. I'd have to look them up here. They were in the report, but trying to link Washington's carbon market to the California, to Ontario, or whatever it is, there's another carbon market that they're trying to put together. That is another kind of sideways way to try and link carbon standards in Washington State to other areas, and one of which was Canada. So, yes, I agree that that is definitely a concern with that bill. Now, like I said, it had a hearing in committee, gosh, I think on the 11th here, and we haven't seen it move since. So that's House Bill 2051, had the public hearing on January 11th, and they're running out of time to get this one moved. Additionally, inside the caucuses, you know, there's kind of a, as they move bills through the House and the Senate, you know, whoever's in power, whether it's Republicans or Democrats, they try and be as fair as they can. And they go, look, if one caucus is gonna run a bill, the other one maybe gets to run two, or one for one, or three to one, or whatever. Whatever that agreement is right now, the minority caucus has not had their allotment. And there's quite a bit of dissension about that right now, so they're... And of course, the minority can bog things down with amendments and all kinds of stuff and really gum up the process in a short session. Time matters. So I know that that has put a damper on bills coming out of committee, going into rules, and then hitting the floor. So until they get that resolved, yeah, they're probably gonna hold things up here for a little bit.
Don't they have? I thought they were talking about putting it into for executive session, but I'm not seeing it now.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it in exec. It kind of seems like they might have decided to hold that. There's quite a few bargaining chips right now. Anything around climate, anything around, you know, gas engines, et cetera, the use of fossil fuels, all that is super, super touchy. You know, because you have landmass-wise, a majority of the state is opposed to, you know, the citizens in the rural counties, for example, are opposed to any of those regulations while we're catering to the larger cities, which is where a majority of the population is. But I think that being an election year, they're definitely, they're being careful. So that one hasn't hit exec yet.
Mr. Christopher, it's 9:02. Did you have anything for Zach this morning?
Nope. I want to respect this time, so I'll ask my questions next time.
Okay, thank you. Zach, thank you. It's 9:02, and we're gonna move to our regular session.
Sounds good, and you don't have to wait till next time to ask me questions. Call, email, text, anytime.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. It's January 23rd, 2024, and I'd like to open the regular business meeting of the Clickatack County Commissioners. Being noted, all three commissioners are in session. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for approval of the business agenda?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with one add-on under the healthcare authority discussion, and we can put that under, maybe right after Aaron Quinn's department update?
Okay. And all those, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, we'll approve the business agenda passes with one addition in regards to, tell me I didn't get that correct, healthcare authority, and we'll move it to just after our health update. We have no meeting minutes needed for approval, so that brings us to public comment. So public comment is limited to three minutes. If you're joining in Zoom, please click the link. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand. And for those of you in the public, if there are any, please come forward to speak when you're called upon. Thank you. So do we have, we have no one in the room, I believe, for public comment. Is there anyone on Zoom?
662.
2662. If you can unmute.
Hello, Commissioner. Thank you. Hello, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you. This is Tracy from Lisle. And I just wanted to speak today on, I know you're having a workshop on Thursday for Fire Management Plan, and I just wondered if that has something to do with the WUI and the new building codes and the new land stated as being wildland urban interface from DNR. And I'm hoping that you Commissioners will do your due diligence and look at the documents at the DNR website. I went to the DNR website for the wildland urban interface, and they're mapping. And I put in the Latin log of my address, and it comes up with my address plus an additional house with the same Latin log, and that's in Murdoch. So Lisle and Murdoch share the same post office, and I happen to have the same address as a house in Murdoch. And like I said, on the DNR map, it shows the same Latin log for both addresses, which, you know, is not right, and it needs to be changed. And I brought up addresses forever with you guys, and I don't know where to go on it. And speaking towards addresses, when you folks make a contract or a decision, you know, within the Commissioners, you don't designate who is Clickatack County. You say this contract is between Clickatack County and such-and-such person, but there's several, several Clickatack Counties in the county. In other words, if you go to the Dunns site, D-U-N-S, and I know that's outdated, but it still works. But if you go to the D-U-N-S site and you put in Clickatack County, you'll have three pages of different Dunns numbers for different Clickatack Counties, all with different phone numbers and different addresses. And so when you read the agenda and you see a contract or an agreement that you're signing, we as the constituents don't know what Clickatack County you're referring to, if it's emergency management, if it's the planning department, if it's, you know, as such. So if you could put more details in your contract so that we'd be able to designate which Clickatack County you're referring to, it'd be appreciated. And then the last thing is the last four on the zip. So my zip here is 98635. The last four would determine if it's here in Lisle or in Murdoch or in, you know, and Clickatack County, everything that I've ever received from them does not use the last four of the zip code. And I wanted to know why. So they just use a zip 98635, which I'm told by USPS is not a legal address. It has to have the last four. So I just like an explanation of why Clickatack County doesn't use the last four. And my time's probably up, so have a great day, and thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Anyone in the room wish to give public comment?
Thank you.
How are you guys?
Great. We're here.
All right.
Billy Bear, Clickatack County Assessor. Just with the weather we've been having, and I've noticed on Facebook and in my drive to town and around that there's been some property destroyed from the snow loads and things like that. And I wanted to let citizens know that there is a destroyed property exemption if we do in fact have it assessed, if it's a home or an outbuilding or something. There is a process that we go through. Our information is online on our website, and I'm planning on putting just a little blurb on there for information. But I would first recommend taxpayers or landowners to call us first or email, because we may or may not have that property assessed. So just don't want to make more work for the landowner or us at the same time, but we want to make sure that that is known, that there are laws that can reduce your assessment if you did in fact lose your portion or a whole building or structure due to the snow load.
Thank you so much. Valuable information.
Yeah.
Anyone online?
7211.
7211.
Greg Wagner with C. During the FSSEC land use consistency hearing determination, they used the FSSEC, I'm sorry, they used the Energy Overlay Zone and the Clickatack County Comprehensive Plan 2005 update, where it says the county encourages renewables and the county, we want it, we gotta have it. And I'd like to say that that was detrimental to us citizens in their decision using our own county comp plan in the Energy Overlay Zone. And I feel that any future project, solar or wind slated for in and around Goldendale or anywhere in the county that goes through FSSEC, they're gonna use the same Energy Overlay Zone and Comprehensive Plan 2005 amendment against us. And I think that these two issues ought to be the Clickatack County Commissioners, the board's main priority for the upcoming year is to work on that, eliminate the Energy Overlay Zone, because it's detrimental to all the citizens who are in the Energy Overlay Zone, as is the amendment in the Comprehensive Plan. That ought to be this board's top priority, if you want to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of our county. And several weeks ago, I brought up the repowering of wind turbines. And I believe, and I still feel, that when they repower them, they put on longer blades, they raise the unit, they put in a bigger motor generator, that that constitutes that they should be decommissioned, and the permitting process start all over again. Now, in the most recent Clickatack County radio interview, that was a question of Mr. Christopher. And he turned around and confirmed everything I said. He said if they put on 147-foot blade instead of 142-foot blade, that that constitutes decommissioning and a completely new permitting process all over again. This has not occurred on past repowerings, but this should occur on future repowerings. It is actually decommissioning. And I want to thank you, Mr. Commissioner Christopher, for confirming everything that I've said in the past. I am correct. When they designed the original wind turbines, they put in a concrete base to support that height of a wind turbine. And when they raise them or put bigger blades or a bigger motor on them, they create extra load that the base is not required to handle, cannot handle, and it needs to be redone. Repowering is decommissioning, and a new plan should be submitted and go through the whole process all over again. Birds are gonna be killed, there's all kind of, all kind of issues. It needs to be redone, and I want to thank you again for supporting everything I've said. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no new people in the room. I'll ask one more time for anybody with us if they'd like to speak, to come forward. Seeing none, anyone else on Zoom this morning? Sherry?
Good morning, Commissioners. I guess since we're keeping track of the weeks that I bring this subject up, we're on week six. So my question was very, I believe, honorable when I asked the Board of County Commissioners how an entity is two entities in one. How, when we supposedly voted in this RFA, this Regional Fire Authority out here in the West Side, that they became a political subdivision as well as a municipal corporation, making them two legal entities? I honestly just wanted a true answer. How is it? I don't, you know, I never really looked into government nor studied our government, and I had an honest question, an honorable question. And, you know, through the process, you know, I found out that Clickatack County and all, you know, the PD, the emergency, you're all businesses, you're all corporations. And like the other caller said, you know, we'd like to know which corporation is making which contract. And I don't think there should be so many corporations. And last week, you know, I didn't appreciate being said that I'm giving misinformation. In fact, the headquarters for Clickatack County Dunns number, which means you're a business, is 1-896-78295. Everybody can look that up. And Commissioner Christopher verified that you take funds and you invest them. So that does make you a for-profit business. And if we're stakeholders in this corporation, because we invest in it with our property taxes and our sales tax or whatever tax, whatever taxes, all the taxes, you know, license plates, license, yeah, we can go on and on, all the stuff we pay as the people that made our government, that we were supposed to govern. And somehow we become the servants. You became the masters when you were to be the public servants. And, you know, I've done this before. I know I only have a precious minute left for my free speech, but when you raise our value of our houses, you raise the money... you raise the money we pay. When you say, oh, we don't raise property taxes, well, you, you raise the assessed value. So if I buy a hundred dollar coat at ten percent tax, I pay ten dollars. If I buy a forty dollar coat, I pay four dollars. So what, you know, I would appreciate an apology for calling me a conspiracy theorist and misinformation, because honestly, all I'm doing is trying to discover what's happening. I've seen people lose their land for inability to pay property taxes from the government. I don't like to see people being harmed. We should all live by the same common law. Do no harm. And when people are harmed, I care. Like this under canvas, it'll kill people. I care. So maybe one day we'll get to how your two entities in one. And maybe an apology be nice. Thanks.
Thank you, Sherry. Um, anyone else on Zoom? So if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak. We'll try one more time. Uh, and then we'll move back to regular business. So seeing none. So thank you for public comment today and taking your time to, to call in. Uh, we'll move back to regular business now. Uh, do I hear a motion for the consent agenda? Excuse me.
Get a chance to respond to the comment? Okay. When, when?
I'm sorry.
Can I go?
Yes, sir. Please do.
Um, I won't speak to the accuracy or question the accuracy of any of the statements made before us today. Uh, but I will say that in my radio interview, I thought I made it abundantly clear that my personal opinion is if somebody is getting a permit to put an addition on their house, they're not tearing down the whole house. If a company is repowering their windmill, they're not decommissioning their windmill. Um, as a matter of fact, the definition of decommission is a general term for the formal process to remove something from active status. If they are repowering, they're not removing it permanently from active status. So for clarification, just because there seems to be some confusion um, on my opinion of decommissioning. Um, if they are removing a windmill from active status and never plan on spinning the blades again, it is my opinion it needs to be decommissioned. If they are just getting a permit to get new blades, new motor, they will have to go through the full CEPA process um, for the size, height and whatnot of those blades and that motor. Just thought I'd put that out there for clarification to the public in case they misunderstood what I was saying. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Billy, for clearing, uh, and helping, um, clear that up with regards to, um, property and, and the damage. Um, Ms. Bosque, I will again mention that Clickatuck County is not a for-profit corporation. A for-profit corporation takes the, uh, dollars that they have, um, that they create and they give it to the shareholders. Um, and that is the purpose of a for-profit corporation. A nonprofit corporation will never do that. So think of goodwill or something like that. Uh, we are a government corporation, which is completely different as well. Um, and we do not give the excess dollars to county commissioners or anyone else. We are not a for-profit corporation owned by anyone. The PUD is not a for-profit corporation. The dollars that the county treasurer invests are many different districts' dollars. Uh, they can be irrigation district dollars. They can be hospital and school district monies that they have, that they have dollars available that they don't need right now. So they invest those in short-term notes, um, and other short-term investments so that at least you're getting a return on the cash so that you're trying to keep up with inflation. Um, the county is doing that with our reserves that we don't need to use today. That is a normal business operating, um, process that all governments do. So I'm just trying to help you understand. Billy is sitting here in the audience, so I guess, uh, I'll, I'll try to respond to when you say, when we raise, uh, your assessments. Billy is required to by state law to reassess your property. And there's a range in which it has to fit within that, um, assessed value. If the assessment is going up, that's because your property is worth more. And that's based on the market value as the market's changing. And she has an entire formula and program that goes through it to figure out these assessments. It is not someone trying to do harm. It's not the county doing harm. It's ensuring that the county properly follows the law and properly assesses the properties. And if people don't have the money, we have payment plans through the treasurer's office. We have elderly, um, plans that help. Um, we have a lot of different things that state law allows us to do to help residents so they don't lose their property. And I think that's.
That's you good?
I, and I believe Ms. Anderson has responded to, uh, Ms. McKeon, uh, many a times on the addressing. So I don't think there's anything else we can add there.
Thank you. Um, and I'd just like to add, um, Sherry, I, it was never my intention to ever offend you. And, um, I do value, and I vow all of you who take time to call in and spend your time to speak with us and tell us your views and your concerns. Um, and Sherry, we've sat and had coffee before. I think we're long due. Uh, I'm going to reach out and see if you have time to meet with me soon. Um, after the weather's a little better and we don't have to travel on ice. But I would, I would appreciate that to spend some personal time with you again. So thank you. So we will close our comment period now. Um, and I would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, we have before us one item on the consent agenda. My motion is to approve.
One second.
All those in favor?
Discussion.
Sorry. Yep, let me get my sheet out. Okay, so any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
I.
The, I, those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved for the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, we have before us the account payable warranting the amount of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventeen cents. Uh, and the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date ending January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. My motion is to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes for the payroll warrants in the amount of five hundred and fifty-five thousand, sixty-four dollars and seventeen cents ending January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Madam Chair, we have, uh, accounts payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars and three cents. And payroll benefits warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date entering January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. My motion is to approve.
All second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, the motion to approve the payroll warrants in the amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and one dollars and three cents, ending January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four passes.
Madam Chair, we have the account payable warrants in the amount of seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. And payroll benefit warrants in the amount of zero dollars for the date entering January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. My motion is to approve.
All second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Me? Aye. Excuse me. Um, opposed? Please say nay. Hearing none, the motion is approved for the payroll warrants in the amount of seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents ending January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Thank you. So we're to that time of our session for update for our planning interim director, Lori Anderson. Thank you, Lori.
Well, the bottom part is about four days.
Oh, okay.
So don't be overwhelmed.
Okay.
So just the quick planning update. Um, obviously, you know, last week we did not have our planning commission workshop due to weather. And then we didn't have work for a few days due to weather. So I haven't been able to relay contact the planning commission members about rescheduling. Um, Dave Barta called yesterday, Rick Graves called first thing this morning. And they're thinking, even though the weather's improving, it's still winter and lives are kind of chaotic. So they actually, both of them suggested maybe we just not reschedule and just planned to meet in February twentieth. I haven't reached out to the other members yet, but I can do that. And then we do have a new member that we need to get in contact with and get him information. Of course, Matt Childs has been on the Board of Adjustment, so he has a lot of the documents already, but we need to get with him. And then I didn't get a chance to listen to the recording. I believe the vacant position, has that been filled? The one that Norma Vincent, okay.
Aye.
So I'm sure that's coming or is in the works.
Hoping so, but then the weather hit and I think nobody would, taking time to put in applications.
That, totally understandable. So if you don't mind, I'll reach out to the planning commission members. And unless there's some overwhelming desire to meet prior to February twentieth, because the nineteenth is President's Day, so we will meet Tuesday, the twentieth. If, if you don't mind. And then at that point, we will hopefully finish chapter one of the critical, the draft critical areas ordinance and go from there. Um, moving on with the weather-related office closures. Actually, I live just a few blocks away, so I came in a couple of days, was able to postpone some meetings and reschedule a few things. And, um, yesterday that worked out very well, having the two hours late. Thank you. Uh, then during the closure, we did have many, many calls and emails and public records requests. So we are working on getting caught back up. Um, pre-submission meeting tracking, we didn't get as far as we wanted to. But on the backside of your one-page thing is how many pre-sub's we had in twenty twenty-three. Now what we're going to go back through is try to figure out how many pre-sub's actually resulted in applications. And some of that will be a little tricky because, for example, you do a short plat pre-sub, then you need to hire a surveyor to survey the property. So it may be months or even into the next year before they actually get an application together. So, ooh, but I am happy to report, uh, the two rezone pre-sub's did result in pre-sub, uh, rezone applications in twenty twenty-three. So that was one thing I could easily report on. Um, under canvas, there's no update requests for proposals. Those are due the twenty-sixth at two P M. Uh, this week we planned to route the Binge and Point Port project. And then we still have lots of the other pending projects that you're well aware of. Which then leads into part two, the eighteen pages. And I do apologize for having so much, but.
That's good.
But some of the older documents were all together, so just put them together. So I, I don't know if you want me to just start with the Board of Adjustment. Um, first and foremost, um, I'd strongly encourage some legal counsel to get involved because this changing the duties of the Board of Adjustment would affect quite a few ordinances and amending quite a few things. Um, the Board of Adjustment was created May eighteenth, nineteen seventy, under ordinance five, one, eight, seven, zero. And there's, and seventeen pages are attached with that sort of information. The primary resources we have or that I came up with was R C W thirty-six seventy in the two hundreds. And that covers the roles and duties of the Board of Adjustment. Um, R C W thirty-six seventy C covers decisions that are appealed to Superior Court. And that is what happens with the Board of Adjustment decisions. They are appealable directly to Superior Court. And then our zoning ordinance, section six point two, to the end of that chapter, is all about Board of Adjustment. And this is just some of my own personal history. Um, since November of ninety-one, when I started in the planning department, probably at least ninety-three percent of our projects were the consideration of conditional use permits. Approximately five percent dealt with variances and those are primarily, um, variances to setback requirements, setbacks on property lines. And then the remaining approximately two percent, and this is just in my memory, one was for an appeal of a resource lands evaluation. And the other was a variance to the critical areas ordinance. And, and certainly if you have questions, holler, I'll try to answer them. And our zoning ordinance is the primary ordinance that covers the Board of Adjustment. Um, under basically every zoning designation, there's a list of uses allowed with conditional uses. And there's always a catch-all, uh, that the Board of Adjustment may per, permit as conditional uses, any other use it judges to be no more detrimental than to the adjacent properties than and of the same type and character as the above listed uses, which is referencing conditional uses. Uh, section three point one talks about the purpose of, of Board of Adjustment and having, um, supplemental provisions to, to the requirements. Three point six, one is setback variances. Three point eight, five talks about home occupations. Four point two is off-street parking. Five point one, zero is non-conforming uses. And then under that, uh, there's use one, four and seven that specifically mentioned needing Board of Adjustment approval. Five point one, four talks about reapplication. For example, if an application is denied, there's a time period before you can reapply. And then back to section six point two and the zoning ordinance through six point eleven talks about adjustments, variances and appeals. And then doing a quick search in some, some of our other ordinances. Um, the Recreation Park Ordinance references the Board of Adjustment, Critical Areas Ordinance. And that's the current and the draft. And Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. And then the Shoreline Master Program. And there's a resolution on page eighteen of this that talks about, uh, shoreline substantial development and shoreline conditional use permits going to the Planning Commission, since they're both a conditional use and a shoreline permit. So there's kind of my basic summary of the Board of Adjustment. Other than they typically meet the first Monday of the month, unless that's a holiday. And of course, they only meet when they have items to meet on. And first and foremost, um, I, I am not the one to recommend or tell you how to proceed if you wanted to change the duties of the Board of Adjustment. And strongly encourage legal counsel.
Thank you, Lori.
Oh, you're welcome.
Historical knowledge is, uh, we can't do without you.
Oh, well.
And, and I thank you for putting the packet together. This is a wealth of information we would have had to look for. And I appreciate your comments. Um, I also, um, hope that we consider, we have a new planning director coming. And I would like him wrapped into these things too. He has a very long background too in planning and a lot of crucial information that he can, can help with these. And this also affects his work going forward. So I'd like to see that.
Most definitely.
Thank you.
And we're excited to have him coming.
Yeah, I bet.
Yes. But certainly if you have questions, I'll try to answer and.
Uh, well, I guess the, it's Board of Adjustment discussion, um, with the information that we've been given that's in our packet. Um, is there anything this board would like to do? Any actions?
Mr. Christopher? Do you have comments or?
I, I have no comments.
I have no comments at this time.
For now, I believe it's prudent to listen to Ms. Anderson and send this to the prosecutor for his review to see if there were changes, what would happen, or if they can be changed. Is are we at that portion yet?
I wouldn't think so. I would think we would have to come up with a what we would like to change. If there's anything broke, then we would want to fix it. But I guess my personal opinion from from the previous discussion we were having, I believe that it was potentially that after the Board of Adjustment, then we were looking at it coming before the Board of County Commissioners was the discussion I thought that was brought up. And we wanted to look into the RCWs and see if that was a possibility. Is that how you recall?
Yes.
And so I guess from from my review of the RCW, it clearly says that the decisions by the Board of Adjustment are final. And so the RCW takes care of it. So thank you for the overview. But I don't see that there's anything that the Board could do to change that process if it's enshrined in RCW.
Right. And that's how I understood it. And I did not actually have a problem with the process. Just there's some application homework type process within the Board of Adjustment was what I was interested in looking at. But changing the entire process, I think I don't know if it's possible, and it's a huge lift, a lot to talk about if we're even going to talk about that. Mr. Christopher, where would you like to go with Board of Adjustment conversations?
I don't have anything to offer at this time.
Okay. So at this time, are we interested in just leaving Board of Adjustment as it is and making sure we get a new member to replace Mr. Childs?
I mean, unless something comes up from my perspective, we don't even, we don't need it on the pending items list or anything. It's it is what it is. And RCW says what it is.
Okay. And I'm sure you'll update us if you want more information or what we need to do. So
I do not myself know why it was on the agenda today. I did not put it on the agenda.
I think it was asked for workshop. And then what happened with that is we had time on our agenda. So we split some things. So we didn't have such a heavy workshop. So we brought it today.
And if I may, Chair, I would like to say thank you to Lori Anderson. This is a great document. It's a great research that you did. I am impressed, to say the least.
Thank you. A lot of time the last few days, even even though I may not have been here, but you know, you can only sit at home and shovel stone for so long. So thank you and have a good day and all.
Well, and I'd like to say thank you, Lori, for working at home. And so the public knows, being Chair, my phone rang constantly four in the morning on, I think. And I have to thank all of our staff and all of our directors that did work at home. We had lots of people working at home that I communicated with during this time. So people were keeping up on their their duties as best they could.
And I do have to admit, since I live nearby, I just came in a couple of times.
And I know there were several that came in that couldn't have braved the roads that I worried about a few times.
My dogs were confused when I was at home working. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. So Commissioner miscellaneous reports and comments. Where would you like to start? Mr. Christopher?
Thank you. I did bring forward the Washington State Archive Local Grant Program grant. I have tried for three years in this county to get our archiving caught up. We have basements full of paper documents. We have shipping containers full of paper documents. We have offices with thousands of pounds of paper documents over the heads of other employees. I have brought up multiple times in three years that this board should hire an outside agency to scan those documents. I have brought up that this board should work with IT to get a software package that will make those scanned documents searchable, which will save countless hours of public records requests time and will also allow us to be compliant with public records for the first time in a long time. And I've always been able, been told no, and it's it's always a money thing. So I'm bringing before you a grant that will pay for a big lump sum of it. Now, unfortunately, you can apply for either $30,000 for the IT software part of it. Or 20,000 for organizing the file room or 50,000 for the scanning and uploading. But you only get one. It is my opinion that if we pay for a scanner and uploader, it's a minimum of 50. That I believe that's the one we should use. But I believe I'm hopeful that this county sees the dire importance that I see. And will no longer use the financial part of it as the excuse to not do it. And it will work with someone, whether that's our staff to facilitate the grant or HR to facilitate the grant, will work with IT to figure out what software needs to be put in place. We'll reach out to the scanning companies to get a ballpark cost so that we can facilitate writing a grant and actually fix a problem this county has had for decades. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Christopher. I think we all agree that scanning documents and archiving them and having them searchable makes an enormous amount of sense. I would also like to thank all of our departments who have been scanning and putting their documents online. I know our Public Health Department has spent hundreds, if not thousands of hours doing that with all their documents. Our Environmental Health Department has done that. I think that this grant is great. I would support moving forward with it. I think we should add it to the workshop agendas and ask the other electeds to come in with their ideas on the best way. And then we can get an update from them on how they have made progress on scanning documents and sending them in. I know the Auditor's Office, I believe, has done a great job of this in the past. And so I was, I think that's the best way to move forward from my perspective is to bring the group together. IT and as well as the electeds for a conversation on applying for the grant dollars.
Hearing from the auditor, I guess she has tried to apply three times. And she said that it's a highly competitive grant.
I bet. Doesn't hurt to try. I agree at some point to Ms. Anderson bringing in the electeds in the departments to see who needs help with scanning and who's already moving forward. And you've gotten themselves in position where they are working on it. Money is always good. We should try to apply if we can to help those who are in the hole possibly. And moving forward, jumping the agenda a bit, we're going to be having discussions later in the morning about the WSU contracts. And Hannah submitted her background and what she'd been working on. And I noted it was she has, she doesn't work for just us. It's Skamania County and other counties and other entities. And so she has a very big background in business services. And so that was one of the things I checked on my list, that a possibility going forward with the WSU contracts could be using that staff to help us with scanning and grant writing and grant administration. So those are discussions we can have later in the day. But we have options. And if we'd like to put this on a workshop agenda, coming forward and notify others to come in and let us know what their needs are for scanning, that'd be great. Okay. Anything else on the scanning?
So action item would be to to put it on maybe the agenda for Thursday for a workshop and invite the electeds over? Would that work for Commissioner Christopher?
I if if the electeds would like to take part in this, I have no problem with that. But this was meant for the county to get its house in order. I don't know of a backlog of documents in any other elected officials departments, only our departments. So while I would open the discussion for everybody, this is my request was for this county and the Board of Commissioners to get their departments in order.
Well, considering that the auditor has applied for the grant three times so far, I think it would be good to have a conversation with the auditor about the app, the grant application and applying for it. Because what I would not like to do is having the Board of County Commissioners applying for the grant and the auditor applying for the grant at the same time. I think it would be a good idea to to for the county to apply. And if we need to change the scope or we need to invite other people in to review the grant application so that hopefully we can be more competitive so that we can get the grant. I I just think the discussion is good.
Mr. Christopher, anything else? If we could, for me, reaching out to directors as well for their departments, so we know who's in that loss. Because I know we recently heard from staff that we'd like to talk about scanning. So even our own office needs some scanning help. So I think hearing from the directors and the electeds who'd like to attend and what ideas they have. And especially Heather, in regards to the grant is probably a good idea.
I would recommend this board personally invites IT so we can ask about software. Personally invites solid waste because I know they have a bunch of records. Personally invites building and planning because I know they have a bunch of records. And they're the only ones that I think have a a big enough backlog for us to we need to have their input on that.
Sure. That's why I think, you know, and I think I've heard some things, if I'm not incorrect, in economic development natural resources. So we may just want to reach out to each one, kind of broadcast it out and see who's got a problem. Okay, ready for the next subject?
Yep.
Okay, so Dallas Port wastewater plant PUD budget. The PUD did submit their budget to Public Works for review. And I'm taking a look at it. I only had a couple of questions. I reached out to finance. And the questions that I had, actually, the PUD had sent along a checklist with that budget that they forwarded and answered those questions for me on that sheet. So my questions in regards to that budget have been answered.
I had, did have some questions on that under the contractor section. There's a note G, but the contractor section went from 6,500 to 61,000. And I don't know. I'd like to know that that's a $50,000 expense for the flushing and picking of the line from Hill Street to Dallas Port Road. But I think it would be great for me to have a conversation if we could, we as the board could have a conversation with the PUD about other expenses that they see coming that are, you know, on this maintenance side that might be 50, $60,000. Because, you know, we we raised the rates and it went from rate revenue of 318,000 to 359,000. But we're still in the hole, $31,000. And I want to hear from them what options we have to maybe cut some costs. Because right now we're losing money on the operations. We're not even starting to make progress on our actual capital projects. And that scares scares me greatly.
Mr. Christopher?
Um, I have questions. Who owns the sewer lines? Who should be picking the sewer lines? What's the maintenance schedule on picking sewer lines? Is the cost for picking the sewer lines? Do we charge enough rates to those people that are using that sewer line to pay for picking the sewer line? Or are they not paying for what they're flushing down? So yeah, lots of questions there. Maybe you have the answers if you've talked to the PUD. Capital project list, it looks like they're put on the clarifier for this year's project list. And we'll be submitting a bill for reimbursement to the Board of County Commissioners for the capital project of the clarifier that is not funded. So maybe you have the answer to that one of where we're coming up with the $250,000 to pay for the other half of the clarifier. So I do believe there's questions that need to be answered. If you have the answers, I'm more than willing to listen.
And nope, that's what this session was for, to to look and see if we did have questions. I think it's prudent to visit directly with the PUD, maybe invite them to come in workshop or okay, workshop space, at least that we could work out with them where they have time to come in. And would you like Public Works in that meeting as well?
Absolutely.
I would like to request this board have this meeting on a Tuesday. I'm pretty sure there's a big contingent of people in Dallasport that would like to know what's going on in Dallasport. And they can attend a Thursday non-zoomed workshop. So it's my recommendation, we have that discussion on a Tuesday up to this board on whether they want to facilitate that. So we are now zooming Thursday workshop. I know the board was going to check on costs and prices and things like that, but I didn't know there was an official answer back.
We just got it back.
When did, when did the board officially make that decision?
When did we have that discussion? It's been weeks that we discussed that we were in favor of it, but we needed to discuss what that entailed, whether we could use.
I understand that, but there has to be an official answer from the board. And I don't believe that happened in this room. That's why I'm asking. When did that? I'd like to go watch the video.
I heard you.
I thought I thought we, during the discussion, we said we want to move forward so long as we talked to IT. And in that meeting, we discussed, we decided that we were going to do that. And then it sounds like we got back the information. And we were, and the chair decided to move forward with that because that was the will of the board at the time. If you would like a motion, then we can easily make a motion.
True. If you'd like to go back and search through Zoom to find it, but that's my recollection to Mr. Christopher and staff. That's the same recognition. So that's why we moved forward. But if you'd like an official motion on the record, I could call for a motion to for the board to approve zooming workshops on Thursday. It's been necessary. The public's been asking for it. That's for sure.
I don't think it's needed.
Okay.
But it might be nice to put our official positions on the record because I have a feeling they may be questioned over time. So yes, I have no problem. And with that, I will make a motion that we formally zoom and record all Thursday workshops.
I will second the motion.
Discussion.
Just for the record, I would say that when we originally decided to not zoom the Thursday meetings, I was a no vote on that. I was in favor of finding the money and will to zoom the Thursday workshops. So I'm very happy to see that we're doing that now.
Okay. Mr. Christopher, any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Hearing none, the motion is approved for zooming workshops on Thursdays. Thank you.
Can we invite them in on a Thursday workshop?
Does that work for you?
As long as it's zoomed, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. Great. So the coroner position is next on our list. Does anyone have discussion? I have just a small. I did reach out to Skamania County for what their plans were. Like everyone, they're watching that new legislation. And they want to wait till that comes around to make their decisions. And they don't even have this on their radar till maybe May or June for discussions, which it sounds like for us, budget wise, that's a little too late. We need to be done by about March, from my understanding. But they did say they would entertain a cooperative agreement if we so come up with something. So that was positive.
I guess I I had LSC to add to the reports, but we did talk about the legislation up there. And we hadn't seen the legislation when we'd last spoke last week. But on Wednesday, we had a discussion about the legislation. And what the sponsor of the legislation's goal was, was not the legislation that was written down. And the legislation that we thought would allow, you know, the prosecuting attorney's office to continue doing that, that is absolutely not the case. And that legislation that we thought would allow, you know, um, the prosecuting attorney's office to continue doing that, that is absolutely not the case. Um, the only thing the legislation does is um reduces the training requirements. For whoever the coroner is going to be. The sad part about that, though, is the state already pays for the training anyways, so it doesn't actually save the counties any money because the state pays for it. Uh, it just reduces the the training requirements.
Training requirements for smaller counties.
For the smaller counties. So we had a a good discussion at the L S C meeting about what everybody else was thinking about doing. Um, uh, and it really comes down to it, if you want to be appointed, you could then do. Uh, an M O A or, you know, and something between counties so that you can create kind of like a corner district. Um, kind of like the help, public health district, you know, something like that. Um, whereas if it's an elected position, um, it's like elected within your county. And so that's where it gets kind of wishy washy. Um, I've had a few discussions if, uh, and for my my personal opinion is. Um, if we can work with Skamania County um and save a bunch of money, I'm fine with doing an appointed position between the two counties. Um, another way you could do it is um you could do an appointed position like we could appoint someone. And then Skamania County could contract with us. And do it that a way. So there's there's two different ways to do it. It's whether or not the other county wants. Um, saying who that person is or who's going to get, who's going to get appointed. Um, if it's just going to be just Clickittack County, um, I would prefer it be an elected position. And that's just from my discussions at L S C, you know, with what everybody's doing um.
Mr. Christopher?
Um, while it would be nice for Skamania to pay thirty percent of our bill or whatever percentage they would pay. Uh, and that would all be nice and dandy. I believe. And still hold that it should be an elected position, someone that's accountable to the taxpayers. We have enough. Questionable cause of death. Um, situations in this county. Uh, that I surely don't want that to be an employee of the Board of Commissioners. Um, and then the Board of Commissioners questioned on their training or their staff or their hiring, or did they do it this way just so they could save a little money with Skamania County? Um, I would like an elected official. To be in charge of it and that elected official to come before the board and tell me how much money he needs in his budget to do his training. Um, I'm going to stick with elected official, and if this board wants to do otherwise, it can.
How would you like to move forward? Would you like to have a?
I'd like, what what are your thoughts?
Yeah. Where would you like to go from here? You're just standing.
I'm I'm elected. If you guys want to in. Work with Skamania County and try to figure out whatever you want to figure out, that's on the two of you. Uh, my vote is elected and um. That's where I'm at.
I have one question. Um, I'm not sure if we can answer it or maybe. We have help in the room, maybe. Um, as an elected official, can they contract or do an M O U themselves with Skamania County?
Uh, this is, we're getting into the the nitty gritties of the law, and we need to talk to the prosecuting attorney about it. Um, but I don't think the the legislation is going to to help that unless we can get like a substitute um bill put in or some some additional bill language put in. Um, but I know, you know, um, we are not the only county and all Eastern Washington counties are talking about it. I know a couple of counties, um, Stevens, were like, can we contract with um, you know, um Spokane County? Because they've got like a whole coroner's office and all sorts of stuff and. Um, one of the other questions is, I think Yakima County is large enough that they have a whole coroner's um program as well, if that might be an option.
Well, it sounds like we need to put all of our information together on costs and what that would look like for work with. My concerns for Skamania County are, we know the burden Skamania County is under for economics and being a good neighbor, whatever we can. Combine with Skamania County, not to just help ourselves, but help our neighbor. I think that's a good thing to do. Uh, to include them in what we do. I would like to explore what that would really look like if we contract with Yakima. Um, if it's even possible, um, I would like to explore what that means to um. Do the election. I have some concerns about elective position. Um, you can't take that back. Once we make that final decision and we have that elected position we've created, that's a big deal. And to move it back, uh, since we're just beginning under the county commissioners. And we start the program and get it up and running, we can always move to elected, but we can never come back the other way. So I'd like to have that all on paper and have considerations about costs versus the both ways to do it. So do we want to move this further discussion down the line so we can come back with more information?
Yeah, I I think this should stay on the pending items list and has to. We've got to make a decision. We need to start moving forward. Um, I would say let's um um maybe delegate some of the discussion. Um, I was um missed a couple of phone calls during the snowstorm from Skamania County Commissioners, but I wanted to talk to them. Um, uh, and then um. I don't know if if you'd like to talk to Yakima County?
I can reach out to Yakima County. Um, and Mr.
I I would uh recommend that if this board is thinking about making an appointed position, the first people they talk to. Are the people they might potentially appoint. Because those people that they might eventually appoint. May have absolutely zero interest in working for this board, and that might end the discussion right there. Um, I do not, I believe there's quite a number of people that are qualified that would run for the office. Uh, but I do not believe there is uh interest in them working for the Board of Commissioners. So that might be something that this board chose to do before it spent a lot of time. To do it otherwise, just an offer.
Uh, since we both have got our work order, uh, would Commissioner Christopher like to talk to those people and create a white paper or something?
Um, no, Commissioner Christopher would not because Commissioner Christopher believes it should be an elected position and he believes that. It will end up being elected position, whether it's this board that does it or the next board. So if you want to spend your time going through that process, feel free.
Moving forward, so we'll put that on pending issues coming up. Would you like to wait two weeks, Jake? Um, to put that on pending.
The workshop for two weeks, I think would be good. Uh, hopefully, because next week I'll have another discussion at L S C and see what what other counties are doing.
Yeah, it takes time to get answers back. Sometimes I'm going to reach out to a couple of different places, so. I need a little bit of work time on that. Uh, any other? Uh, we're close. We're overtime by four minutes for Public Works. Can we move on to Public Works? Mr. Christopher, do you have anything else?
I have nothing.
Strange.
No, as long I've got L S C and Bridge, and we can just push that after the H T H C discussion.
Okay, so we have Public Works Director update Jeff Hunter.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Hey.
Bye, see you soon, bye.
Maybe. Ready?
I am, yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, we don't have anything on the consent agenda. We spent too much time uh playing with winter weather. Um, we have one pay estimate, and that's for Knife River and the amount of a hundred and eighty eight thousand, three hundred and seventy two dollars. And that's for curve warning and guidepost. That's a federally funded project. So that's all fed dollars. Uh, construction update, again, not a lot moving. Um. Contractor will fin- the curb and warning signs will fit. They'll finish that project when they can, weather breaks. And the crushing, they tried to get into Fisher Hill. They can't get in. It's just too much snow, too much ice, so they're moving to Badger Gulch. But they want to get started because they have, you know, multimillion dollar plant sitting, ready to go, so they want to get in. Um, on the roadside, again, we are working through things, trying to finalize some stuff to get out to bid shortly. Um, fieldwork on the ball bank stuff is uh moving along, and the bridge bundles, we received approval from Wash Dot to go out to R F Q. So we'll be doing that shortly. On the east side, winter reaction, we're going to get more into detail at the end. Um, we're still doing that, same with the west side. Um, upcoming facilities or facility events, uh, we're still waiting for the manufacturer to get here to do the roof replay, to do a punch list on the roof. Uh, Superior Court, we had the. Walkthrough scheduled for last week, but nobody want could drive from Portland up to here. So those are pushed to this week. Events, we acquired a new event. We have a birthday party in the exhibit building on the twenty fifth. And our fuel island, the consultant's still working on the design. We're working away on the auditor's um. Boating area and the HVAC contracts, Pioneer's is out to bid and courthouse will soon be out to bid. Say it is passed. They actually walked in there. They thought it was just as simple as pushing a reset button. It's not camera disappoint. Something's wrong with the camera. So now they got to bring somebody up. Camera sits at sixty feet in the air. Somebody got to bring somebody in to climb the tower and replace the camera. Again, it's their problem, not ours. They should have put the right camera in first. They didn't. I don't want to know. So there's some stuff there. Elevator improvements were rescheduled to next week. Um, that's a big deal. You got to get L and I and everything else, and of course with the storm. And and the weather, they didn't, they didn't make it. So, speaking of the weather. And where are we, what we did? Uh, we will put together a cost when we get there. It's a two, for us, it's a two sided thing. Um, we have facilities and we have roads, so we have both. And we have challenges on both. Um, what we, what we did is, and I can't thank our staff enough, I mean. The guys, we had a small crew on Saturday, but other than that, in the holiday, our guys worked fourteen days straight. Every day plow. The mechanics, they were there with the crews. They also put in some late nights to make sure our fuels. With the weather, we had the fuel systems gel. They had to keep the fuel flowing, and then we had. We had trucks break down. They spent one night till, I think, ten or eleven, putting a truck back together so we could get it back on the road. Um, speaking of trucks, we still have three ten yarders down, one five yarder and two one tons down. And two are, one of them's in Portland. Another, the other ones were waiting for parts because we just can't, nobody can get anything across the gorge. If we had the parts, we fixed it. We did what we could. We ended up renting a grader. Emergency rental for a grader. The only way they could get it here is they rode it the thing down fourteen with with chains all the way around it from Wash U. That's how they got the grader here because um for anybody that drove west to here. It was really bad. Fourteen was the worst I've ever seen it. When we went, it took us two and a half hours to get from Golden Dale. To the Pioneer Center on Thursday. To do work there. Um, again, our office staff, they got here, at least a couple of them every day to answer the phones so we could respond. Um, our inspectors and survey crew. We're out on the, we're out on this uh cutting trees out. Yesterday, we had, we've lost over a hundred and fifty trees. Um, they've also, the ser- the inspectors have been working around the facilities. Um, helping us do carpentry work and also their clearing snow. They, now they're clearing snow because our other guys, because they were working on snow stuff. Now they got to catch up on all the work orders. So they're doing the work orders, and our guys, we got to get this snow cleared once we get. Another five yarder that we have at the fairgrounds up and running. Mechanics are working on that as we speak. Um. Our roads, like I said, were better than uh Wash Dots. You know, I can't thank, like I said, the staff enough. I spent more time with uh Rick Miller and Troy Grumbles than I probably did with my. Or definitely did with my family and what they did with their family, so. Um, we are fortunate enough to have our contractors when we called, except for one. They showed up. We called people that we needed. We called a plumber. He came in Saturday because the hot water heater went out again in the jail. We basically um re- replaced most of the components on the hot water heater. Luckily, we had them in service. Or we could make them, the ones we did work. But long term, the hot water heater is probably on end of its leg. And that's, you know, anywhere but about six or seven thousand dollars just for the the equipment, not for the replacement. Again, when, and what happened to that is, is the system that's in there, the fire suppression system froze. And then when it, when it thawed, it sprayed water. And it had enough impact to shoot. The end of the pipe through a wall. And then it flooded the jail, the jail kitchen. It's like rain coming out of that. Um, enough to fill the fifty five gallon trash. There was a lot of water. Uh, we, again, Iowa can't speak. Hot, more highly, we thought we had about a ten percent chance of getting the three things done that needed to be done. They had no heat. No fire suppression and no hot water. And we were told if we didn't get it done by three o'clock that afternoon, they were going to evacuate the jail. The cost of that would have been phenomenal to the county. Luckily, we got it done around one thirty. And we avoided the evacuation jail. Then the hot water heater went out again, so we were back there Saturday, fix the hot water heater. Um, so yeah, we've done a lot. Um, I will say when people take shots at this building. We would not have had this building, we'd have been in serious trouble. Because Annex one would have froze up and burst pipes everywhere. It would be closed right now. Same with the Annex three, you'd have froze the water, the main water line is right underneath the concrete. You would have had no water there. Annex two, who knows what that would look like? But um, yeah, this building was fine. I heard when all the power went off, we could see the lights from this building. Again, uh, we still have some, we still have some stuff we're working on. The jail generator, we have somebody here doing that. The jail hot water heater, like I said, works. Uh. We're hoping it's going to continue to work. That's the plan. We haven't had seen any issues, but we're going to monitor it. Uh, we had a couple leaks in the jail.
The jail, sorry, if the jail hot water heater. Is it end of life? Is it uh feasible for us to relook at our uh capital? Project list and potentially put it on and take something that can be moved till next year off?
Yes, that is a potential. We will, that's one of the things we will look at.
Okay.
The other thing I'll work with Rob because what helped make that thing come to the end of its life, because they have electronic switches and everything in them. When you squirt, when you douse them with. Who knows, a couple thousand gallons of water? They don't like that. So that might be an insurance claim. Again, I'll work with Rob on some of that. We're hoping we'll get some. I don't know what we'll get. We have some, we have a couple leaks in the jail, but those are not from the roof. We've pinpointed where those come from, and we'll be fixing those. Um, Pioneer Center Fire Suppression, when we put it together, we put it together. Because at the end of that, there's a T at the very end of the line, and it's a blow off for the last. Um, the last uh fires or the last sprinkler head. When you blow the system off, there's a head outside. And it blows the system. Well, that froze and broke. So we don't have the T. You're not going to get that. It's a specialized pri- product. But you don't need to blow the system on. So what we did, we went in, capped it, had a hole in the sheetrock, crawled in there, capped it. And we, the fire suppression guy's actually here today. So he will, but it doesn't hurt the system because all the heads work. I just want to make that clear. I heard the rumors. The building was shut down. It's not shut down. We're still working with the HVAC system. We're still working with the HVAC systems. Um, again, the cost, we're gonna try, some of the costs are, we're not gonna catch, it's gonna be harder to catch, it'll take longer. Because for instance, in the jail, the temperature dropped to fifty degrees. We've run the units at a lot higher temperature than we would like to. And that is to bring the jail up, especially when we didn't have the generator. So if the heat went out, or if the power went out again, we wanted to keep the gen, the jail warm enough. So everybody, so we'll be able to kind of turn that back down. We've also ran the Pioneer Center. We usually turn the, the buildings down and on the weekends to unoccupied. We didn't do that this time at the Pioneer Center. Especially the end where West District Court is, because that's where we were having trouble with the units. And what was happening with the units is, is again, they were trying to cool seven minus degree temperature, our heat, seven degree minus temperature up. And there was a, there's something in the electronics froze, because they should go to just the inside units. For some reason, they did not, we don't know, just got, I just got heard, we were thinking that it was fuel and the generator out here, it appears it was, it might, it appears it's the uh, motherboard. Uh, again, most of this stuff was caused by this storm. I've been here for fifteen years, I've seen the snow, seen the ice, seen the cold, I've seen the wind. But never all at the same time. And it stayed cold for a long period of time. Uh, but again, I can't thank our group enough and the support we had. And that's kinda, I can answer any questions, but that's where.
All I have to say is thank you and thank you staff and um, all the hard workers that tried to maintain our roads, which I don't know how they ever managed that one, so uh, it would, it would be nice if we could at least do lunch for them or something, one of these, uh, I know that used to be a thing. Um, even if we're just buying pizza at the end of this for, for both end shops, it would be my recommendation to the board that we uh, we do something. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
You guys put in an enormous amount of time, effort and due diligence, and I think you, your staff, um, your facility staff, your drivers, your mechanics, um, people going above and beyond, doing things that are usually outside their regular work duties. Um, that uh, was a heck of a storm. And um, I've seen a lot of people, you know, questioning why the county offices were shut down online, well, now you know. Everybody's house, we all had pipes freeze, we all had issues. Um, it's a whole different ballgame when you've got, you know, multiple buildings, um, with, you know, dozens of heating units that are having problems, and yes, there was a reason that the, the county offices were shut down. But I want to make it very clear that county employees were working very diligently during this shutdown, and I can't thank you all enough.
And me too, and thank you for the constant contact. Uh, you send updates to people that need to know, and um, this morning, you even sent an update. It, it was a little around five o'clock, I think, and when that phone dinged, and I thought, no. I don't want to hear anything bad, but it was a good update that we were making it today and moving forward, so I really appreciated that.
Yeah, I felt bad though, because actually it turned out, I thought we were done, now we have freezing fog and uh,
It's not gonna last.
And it was, no, it's not supposed to, and, and actually, when I talked to the guys, the roads were bad, and then they started free, it's like an anomaly though, because it's, the ground is colder than the air temperature, so where we got the snow and ice cleared off and the, the road was blacktop, it became very slick. I guess, and I did hear, um, you know, we had some roads that were pretty bad, and I know one happened to be Commissioner Christopher's road, we struggled with that.
I, I was hoping that I wouldn't get in trouble, because it was literally one lane wide. And I uh, I had the snow blower on the back of the tractor, and at least in front of my property, I made it two lanes wide. Um, and just kind of a gradual approach back to one, so nobody was going to, and then ramming in with snowbank, but if I didn't get in trouble.
No, we appreciate it, we had some other people help, we appreciated all the.
If we could make a little turnout once in a while, it, it helps, so.
It does, it does, I mean, yeah, our goal was to get up, it took us a while when we got the snow to punch.
There you go, for everybody listening, the commissioners' roads were not all perfect.
No, they were not, I can tell you that factually, everybody got the same treatment.
Today was the first day I could get out.
Yes, it was, it was miserable.
Yes, it was, it was dangerous, and this morning was even dangerous, um.
It was, yeah, it was so bad Friday that you couldn't walk out here without shoe, shoe change.
It's, it's pretty sketchy out there right now.
Yes.
So, thanks Jeff. Piggybacking on Commissioner Anderson, um, you know, the public should note, after COVID, uh, our technology uh, evolved to where even though we're closed, I was um, talking to a lot of employees in offices and departments throughout the closures, some employees actually came in um, and worked in the facilities and um, three or four years ago, prior to COVID, we, we couldn't have continued to work offsite like we have, so. A significant number of employees continued to work, even though they weren't on at this location, so that's.
If I can interrupt, I have to thank uh, Mr. Van Cleve too, because so many of our employees helped other employees, departments helped departments, whatever needed to be done. And Mr. Van Cleve is in the DOWs, and I'm gonna tattle on him, he even assisted the sheriff's office by struggling on the bad roads in the DOWs and the traffic to get to cash and carry, to get extra groceries for the sheriff, so the sheriff could pick them up at the bridge area and take them up, so everybody helped everybody, it was, it's our county, it's great to see us as well.
Um, if I may, I, I think um, something I would like to see is a, is a pro- proclamation of appreciation for all of our essential employees. Um, county as well as PUD, um, during this uh, uh, turn of events.
Thank you.
Elise, did you get that? Great, good, well, thank you Jeff, and um, Mr. Christopher's suggestion for a lunch for Public Works, good?
We typically do one.
Okay.
We always have, we've always invited the commissioners, we just haven't had one in a while.
Let us know.
Because we try to do it our downtime, so it would probably be more in the spring. Um, because it never fails, if we schedule something now, we'll have an event and then.
Nobody can.
At least there'll be food for the people to.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
Okay.
Um, and then I don't know if this board wants to address it, or if it got the email from staff uh, a week ago. Uh, that there is questions from staff on um, who is an essential worker, who is not an essential worker. Um, it sounded like uh, employees needed direction um, on who was or who wasn't, and then whether this board wanted to uh, clarify or come up with some kind of a list so that they would know.
And I think, um, Elise, didn't you find something in our policies of what essential was, but I think that um, we need a longer conversation, uh, even about closures, um. There's been some discussion that maybe the closure statement needs, needs to be more directed towards is the facility open and available, and then reaching out to let directors um, dedicate who they need into the office, who they don't. Um, so I think we need to have a workshop on that to refine that policy on what we do for closures and how we use those.
Because the other question is, we do have employees that work on Saturdays. And while you close it on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, you don't get the phone call to say, do we close it on Saturday?
Right.
So does that Saturday employee need to drive across the ice skating rink because town is not open?
Right.
How does that work? Um, you know, it's amazing, we don't have an answer after twenty years, but technically, we should have a policy in place that we know the answer going forward.
Well, life used to be simpler, I think, we'll just say that about it, but we do need to update that, that policy.
And I, and I believe that uh, Director Van Cleve was um, hit the nail on the head. Um, when we put out the press release, that's that the offices will be closed, they will be locked up. Um, there are people that live next, next door that may want to come in and work, and if the building has water and heat, they can do that. But just because the building is closed does not mean, because most employees now have laptops and can work from home. And I think maybe what part of that policy is, is we, before we know an event happening, we have our directors make sure that they're sending laptops home with people, so that they can still do some work or a portion of their work, because either way, the work's gotta get done, I mean.
Well, I know there was frustration too about the building not being open, because if somebody wanted to say, come get a permit, but during that time, we have responsibility, a big responsibility too for public safety and watching out for the public, and maybe the idea needs to be, if the building's not open, and it's a good idea that you put your permit off for a few days for your own safety. And on top of that, we're very, very responsible for the people in the field. Our EMS people, the ambulance people, the more people on the road, the more we're subjecting staff and emergency people to harm for themselves too. So it's kind of a bigger look of looking out for everybody, not just being public servants. Kind of changes our tone a little bit when something big happens. But yeah, I look forward to that conversation about um, amending that policy. And did we have uh, Health Department, Erin Quinn? Oh, okay.
Ah, so Madam Chair, we have before us the pay estimate for approval of uh, number one, um, for the curve warning signs and guidepost CRP three seven one in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents, my motion is to approve.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved for the pay estimate for the curve warning signs and guideposts, CRP three seventy-one in the amount of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and seventy-two cents. And now, there's Erin, she's gonna be on Zoom, great. So we have our department update from Health Director Erin Quinn.
Good morning, hopefully you got the packet, I think I had it sent over before the snow hit, so hopefully you got all the numbers I sent over, so. Um, for environmental health, it's, you know, it's our slow season, so really, this is the time of year when they focus on making sure that the policies and procedures are upgraded, um, working on administrative updates, doing training, and making sure all their quality control for the water lab, all of those kind of administrative duties get taken care of for the year. Um, they have updated the onsite design for homeowners, there's a manual, I believe it's online, so that's been updated. Um, they had received some community feedback about site evaluation guidance, and so that's been updated as well. Um, they've been continuing to support our code compliance, um, and supporting George in some of the work that he's doing. And doing a lot of work this time of year around the foundational public health services funding, so environmental health is tasked with participating on five different core teams, um, and so supporting the state in planning around drinking water, safe communities. Um, there's some land use planning in there as well, and some data management, so supporting those um, groups so that we continue to get funding to support the work that we're doing in those areas, so. Um, that's kind of what environmental health is up to. Uh, clinical health, we just actually received uh, drug takeback mailers. So people can come into either lobby of the Health Department and pick up a um, drug takeback mailer, the instructions are in there, so if you have extra medications at home that you want to dispose of safely, you can come pick up a mailer. Um, follow the instructions in the mailer and then ship them home, so we're, we're providing those now. Um, and those are prepaid postage, so you just literally have to pick up the envelope and then it's all taken care of from there. We do have two fairly large audits coming up this spring and summer, so we have our WIC audit that's coming. Um, it's actually not scheduled yet, they're gonna just give us a sixty day notice, but we anticipate that that will be sometime this spring. Um, and then our sexual reproductive health audit is going to be in June, we do this every two years, it's a pretty, it's a pretty robust audit, um, and there will be a lot of, it takes a lot of time and energy to make sure that we have um, things squared away in the manner that they feel like we should, so we'll be focusing a lot on that. Um, the nursing staff are partnering with the Fort Vancouver Regional Library to provide some health education with the library. Initially, they're gonna start this project in Goldendale, um, and once they get kind of their process dialed in from there, they're gonna go ahead and um, bring that same programming over to the uh, the White Salmon Library as well. There's gonna be a focus on uh, lead testing for our WIC clients, um, over the next year, the state's really pushing that, we had initially set that up. Um, uh, probably about a year ago, I think, um, and now we're really getting up, you know, what the guidance is gonna require them to be tested at twelve and twenty-four months. And that as those WIC clients are coming back in the office, that will be a big part of um, providing and facilitating that testing for those clients, so. Um, that's what we have for clinical health. Um, administratively, uh, currently we're fully staffed. Um, mostly currently staffed, I do need to, so we have contracted with a dietitian for the last, I don't know how many years. Um, at least twenty that I can think of through uh, Mid Columbia Medical Center, and they are no longer able to meet our needs. Um, and so we have uh, ended our contract with them. Um, we would like to fill the dietitian position as a casual position instead of a contract position. And with that position, we're going to ask um, for an alternate pay schedule. Uh, we are making the pay in alignment with the um, dietitian that's being paid in Skamania County, uh, which does not, is not in alignment with our um, our current pay schedule, so uh, any thoughts about that?
I, I guess, this Commissioner Christopher, I guess for clarification, you're asking for potential uh, pay rate change based off what Skamania County is paying. I guess for me, moving forward, um, I'm kind of a fair across the board person, and I would need to see what the pay is um, through HR with our comparable counties.
Okay, I can work with HR on that, but I will tell you, we were, we have been paying fifty-five dollars an hour. Um, MCMC said if they wanted us to continue with them, they asked for seventy-five dollars an hour. Um, and then I, we called Skamania County and they're paying sixty-five, and we felt that kind of the sixty-five was the middle of the road and fair, but I, I will, I will get that information to HR for you.
Actually, we have Casey standing here, I, did you want to weigh in on this, Casey, or no?
We have been discussing this.
Okay. I just, I, I guess where I'm coming from is I just want to make sure it goes through correct channels. Yeah, that's all I'm, I'm gonna thank you.
Okay. Uh, finance wise, we just, um, we redid all of our VARs numbers. Um, the public health was supposed to have updated the VARs numbers in twenty twenty, um, obviously, here we are four years later. Um, and we got those done, um, Elizabeth and our finance department did a pretty huge lift to get those done, and then um, both the auditor's office and Nicole especially, and the treasurer's office really, really supported us in a huge way to get this updated and um, it wasn't as quick of or easy as a process as everyone anticipated, um, but we were able to get that kind of all done and squared away, so really streamlined our fiscal processes and brought them up to kind of where the state expected us to be four years ago, so we were pretty excited to get that done, and Pam also in Public Works was a huge supporter of getting that done. Um, and then as far as contracts, I have one contract pending coming up, um, and that's just, we're extending the contract we have with Village Reach, they're doing an after action report, a COVID after action report that's required of us by the state. Um, you've approved their contracts before, we just, it's taking a little bit longer than anticipated, so we're just, we're just pushing the timeline out, so it'll look very similar when you see that to what you've seen already at least once before, so. Questions about public health?
Doing good, you have a very big world.
I, yes. Yeah, thank you. Uh, so for behavioral health, um, I just want to address again, because this keeps coming up, um, outpatient services are contingent on us having the funding to do so, we are funded to do crisis, we are providing crisis twenty-four seven in this county. Um, until we have the funding to set up outpatient services. we can't have them, because outpatient services are very expensive, and for us to have plans with no money is, uh, frankly irresponsible, so. We're working on that, we're gonna initiate the, um, negotiations with the Medicaid organizations, I believe next Friday is our first one, and so still working through the process of getting credentialed, it's still not being quick, easy, um, challenges at every turn with that, so. Uh, it's definitely being worked on, um. We're really trying to aim for at least something outpatient by June, but also again, I can't promise that, because again, it's contingent on funding and then frankly filling the positions, which, you know, can be a challenge as well. We did receive at the end of December, um, a hundred thousand dollars of enhancement money from Molina, um, that's just for us to to use as we see fit to help build our program. With that, I now have enough money to buy furniture for the rest of the building, so you're gonna go ahead, you'll start seeing the bills for, um, and the requests for the furniture purchases to come through, so, uh, when you see those furniture requests, the funding's there for that, so that's, we're getting, we're getting that finalized. We are working with, uh, XBO Health, you all signed, um, the contract with them. They're gonna help us find an electronic medical record, so we had our first meeting with them last week, um, and they're gonna help, help us through the RFP process, they're gonna help us with, um, finding what's gonna be a good fit for us and how, and the EHR that we'll need to build on outpatient services, so we're looking at about a six month process likely with them, and so they're gonna start interviews with staff in the next couple of weeks to determine what our needs are, so that we can move forward there. We did, um, get our first, uh, feedback from our Department of Health Audit. There were some findings about, uh, our onboarding process, um, and I did not appropriately onboard people when they started, uh, when we started the department, and they, they don't like that, and I'm expecting to get my hand slapped for that, so. Uh, we've been going back and forth, we've given them our, how we're managing it from here on out. And I just, I'm there, I just, I didn't onboard people in the way the state saw fit, so. Anyway, so once that report's finalized, I'll make sure that you have a copy, but that's the, that's the big part of that. The co-responder program, uh, we're working through that, so we do have the DCR, we're still working with the Sheriff's Office to be able to get a date to get started with that, so they'll be able to, we have one DCR who will have the availability to be able to do a ride along with a deputy and potentially meet people where they're at in that scenario, specific scenario. Uh, we won't do community response outside of the co-responder program. But Lacey Vilmar has done an incredible amount of work, getting our policies and procedures put together, the program, the training that needs to be done, so that, um, we're hoping we'll start in the next couple of months as well. We are looking at, we did, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from Carol on to do workforce development. Um, we're looking at how to use some of that funding to help with some recruiting, which will be around, uh, recruiting, a couple more DCRs, and then as well as, uh, once we have outpatient services, that will help us with that. That will also help cover, um, conferences and trainings. So there's been an interest expressed in, that we attend, um, the National Conference for Behavioral Health, that'll be in April. And that's really gonna start laying the groundwork for our five year plan as far as getting our federal, um, federally qualified, the, uh, community. I just forgot the, what the name of the acronym is, CCHB, it, it's essentially a, a federal, a federal appointment to run behavioral health, that'll really open up doors to, uh, funding and continuity, um, and it's frankly a really good model for this county, it would be a huge win for us, so that, that conference will kind of set the tone for that, so probably send two or three people to that, to get that education and knowledge so that we can move forward with setting that up. Otherwise, I think, I think that's all I have for behavioral health. Need questions?
Nope, I'm here. Good job.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, any, pending any other questions, I guess I will see you all too.
If you wouldn't mind staying on, Director Quinn, I know you've gotta get to Olympia, but, um, we've got the HCA discussion, I don't know if you were on when we added that to the agenda. Okay.
I was not, no.
Okay, so glad to let you know. Wanna kind of an update? So, um, part of the LSC meeting was, uh, a discussion, um, from HCA about where they're going and what they're working on, um, and, um, it was Jason McGill, who is, um, I think number one or number two with the Healthcare Authority. And then he had, um, four other, uh, individuals, um, that are working on different projects. The best news is they have, uh, capacity funds, um, that are lining up for planning and implementation. And that's of, and the three hundred million dollars. And one of those, um, for technology and IT services, hiring of staff, uh, and since, uh, Carmen's in the room, adoption of certified EHR technology, because they are going to be, um, creating new requirements, because it sounds like there's a good chance that, according to HCA, um, you know, a lot of money we spend is, is because when individuals go into the jail, they, uh, they lose their Medicaid. And so what, um, they're working on is with the feds is that you come in, if you come into a county jail, you won't lose, um, your, I think that's Erin's or something's scratchy. You won't lose your Medicaid services because the average time in jail is less than, uh, the ninety days. And so what they wanna do is, is get the, the feds to agree that because the average time is less than ninety days, we'll just continue everybody in service. The prisons will be more difficult, uh, because the average time is over the ninety days. But they have, um, they're working, um, really well on it. And so I brought up during the meeting, um, with Mr. McGill, I said, well, if you guys are gonna be requiring this new A EHR sort of, uh, system, and it has to be through your certified systems, um, well, we just went out for, um, this last week for contractors for certified E, or for EHR software. And I said, I don't wanna pay for EHR software, and then have you guys come in and say, you've gotta have our EHR server, software and billing software, I said, is there any possibility that we could be your pilot project? And we can jump to the front of the line and we'll be your test dummy, and he's like, that sounds amazing.
That'd be awesome.
Wouldn't that be awesome? I'm like, well, that's out, cuz, and then I said, is there any way that we could tie this in with B, Behavioral Health EHR software, because half of what we're doing in the jails is behavioral health, you know, stuff. And he said, um, uh, he, um, had an email come around, and, um, I haven't got a chance, cuz I believe, um, the chief jail, jail deputy who's been out sick, but I wanna set up a, a, a meeting with, um, these guys, and maybe start pushing on this, so that maybe we don't have to go out for our own software and spend our money when we can spend the state's money. So I just wanted to let you guys know that that came up, and it was a really good conversation. And they also said that they're going to try to help us get through, uh, the behavioral health accreditation process, um, that Director Quinn hasn't had a response from them for a while, I believe. Have you got a response back yet?
I have not.
So we, uh, we're gonna keep pushing on that, but it was a really, really good meeting, um, especially if, you know, of course, at the state, everything moves slowly, you know, they're doing their state assessment, they've got their design, their planning, their capacity billing. A lot of it was developed around juvenile, but they know that they're going further than that, so. I know we've been talking about this for years, um, but to finally see movement on their side and to have the three hundred million, so at least we know that that there's money behind it at the state level, um, that's, uh, that's really amazing, and, um, I, the, the packet, um, should be in your email inbox, I sent it to BOCC. But would you please also send that, um, that email to, uh, Carmen and Bob, um, at the jail? And then hopefully we can get, uh, meetings set up, uh, with Director Quinn and, uh, you guys and HCA and say, how do we jump? We're ready to jump?
Yes.
You're not muted.
Okay, I couldn't tell if Carmen was still talking, but I, I wanna speak to the health record and then because Carmen's in the room and you called her out, I remembered something I was supposed to say earlier that I wanna add that I promised her I'd say today, so. I spoke, well, I've spoken both with Carmen and Lauren, and, um, I spoke with Lauren yesterday afternoon. And it sounds like Lauren is already, he had been exploring the RFP process as far as what a, um, medical record would look like. I, our agreement just yesterday, cuz I didn't, I didn't have the luxury of time, I needed him to kind of tell me yes or no right now. So what we're gonna do is, I'm gonna move forward with our, uh, XBO Health, I'm going to see if they have, if, if the EHRs available have a medical module available, so it would be behavioral health and physical health together, and if they can do that together, then certainly that's something we could work. There's just a plethora of reasons why it would be a great idea to share. And then unless Lauren finds something that he likes better in the interim, or, so we're gonna keep having the conversations, we're gonna work together on it, but, um, he's, he's gonna do his homework as well, I'm gonna see what I come up with, and then we'll definitely compare notes, and then obviously it will be the jail's decision if, if it's a good fit for them or not, because they, they're gonna have very different needs than what we do. So that's the healthcare, and then also we are, again, I forgot to say this, so Carmen, thanks for reminding me, um, continuing to have some pretty epic struggles with transportation, getting behavioral health clients out of this county, so on Sunday, I think it was Sunday, all my days have run together in the last week, uh, Carmen called to let me know that the posse wasn't able to, um, help us with the transport, um, which, I, I mean, I thank you Carmen for calling, we really appreciate that, but it's still not their job to transport these folks for us, they have bent over backwards, they're taking volunteers, like, I cannot say enough good things about the work they've done for us, but it is not their job to be doing this. We're grateful, but it's not their job, and we have got to come up with another solution. Out of, I think, forty eight transfers that we've had out of this county, the EMS, the ambulance district has transported four. The posse at this point's transported over ten, we're regularly looking for other options. So I just wanted to remind the board that this is still an issue, that there still isn't a good resolution, and it's getting just insanely frustrating for, I, I mean Carmen, I felt like she was frustrated as I was, that we cannot get people to the care that they need in a timely manner. And I will say, Sunday the weather was really bad, and we did understand that they might have to wait till the next day to get out of the county, but that's still, they still, we still have to come up with a solution to get these people moved.
Director Quinn, that is just the, the, the forty eight number is not the voluntary, that's the, just the involuntary, right?
That's all, that's all of the people that we've had to transport out of that county.
As I was gonna say, I would certainly hope we haven't had forty eight involuntaries, that, that's a big number.
Uh, I mean, I can tell you how many we've had really quick, just two seconds. I didn't have that tab open. It's pretty close.
Yeah, no.
Uh, fifty five, actually. So we've provided transportation for fifty two of the fifty five, four with EMS. We've had AMR, an outside ambulance company come in eighteen times. And then we've had to figure out, um, the posse's done twelve, so.
Thank you.
It's not always posse members doing the transport. It is reserved deputies, and it is paid, uh, employees in the, from the jail that are assisting, so it is costing us money, but again, like we said earlier, it's the right thing to do, so I hope we can come up with a solution. Maybe they drive Nelly, I don't know. So, we have to do something soon.
I recall our last conversation with, uh, the EMS board, um, it sounds like we need to have another one.
I, I agree, and maybe a more pointed conversation.
If. I mean, this board wants to continue having conversations with the EMS board, it can. I think you'll be in the exact same place next year and five years from now, and ten years from now, it's a philosophy. It's a difference of philosophy and opinion. And, uh, I appreciate what they do, but they have a different opinion, and their opinion is they should not be transporting mental health patients. So, I mean, we can talk about it until we're blue in the face, it doesn't give us anything different than what we currently have.
I would like to schedule another talk with them, myself. Whoever's at the top responsible, I'd like to talk about, um, pointing case coroner. This is one of my concerns over elected. It would be another, what kind of service do you really get for your people?
EMS is not elected, so they have no, they, they don't, they don't have to do anything, they're appointed by us.
So they're appointed, but we have a problem between how the funds are spent or allotted. What's the difference there? Explain that.
They are, the EMS district was set up by the Board of County Commissioners to be appointed by us.
Yes.
We have no jurisdiction or oversight over their budgets. And technically, we don't have any oversight or jurisdiction over who gets appointed. They make a recommendation to appoint, and we say, okay. And that's where it is, they are an independent group of people. To have an independent philosophy, and, um, that's why I've always said that if they were appointed, they would be accountable to the people. We're currently, they are not accountable to the people, which would be my same argument for the coroner. I want the coroner to be, uh, amenable to the people and the people be able to go to their elected official when they have a problem versus an appointed person where they're gonna come to me over a coroner, and I'm gonna say, hey, I don't know coroner stuff, I don't know cause of death stuff, I can't help you. That's why I believe it should be elected, so they can be accountable to the people, but we've had that conversation here before too.
Right, and I still would like to have the MS board that heads the, because I have a further conversation with them about choices and serving the public, so I'd like them to come in and visit. Jake?
I'm, I'm always willing to have people come in and chat. I think, um, we now have a year's worth of transports and documents, and I think, um, it's a good time to have that conversation, um, about, um, you know, we have volunteers that are taking on liability, and the county taking on liability to transport people who are medically necessary to go to a medical facility. And we have, um, doctors that are saying that it's medically necessary for them to be transported involuntarily, meaning they've had their rights taken away. We've, we've gotta figure it out, um, we're, we're we've gotta make some, some inroads here.
Right, but I believe if this board remembers correctly, the EMS's opinion is that if the patient is under the influence of a drug administered by the hospital, then they believe it is their jurisdiction to transport, but if they, if they feel that if the patient is not under a drug administered by medical professionals, driving them to a facility is more the, like a taxi service, and they're not a taxi service. That's where they draw the line on where they transport and where they don't transport, is whether that patient is under, uh, medication by the hospital. So, again, you can bring up that question on the next time we talk, but that is, that is the understanding I have.
And I think, uh, continued conversation would be good. Time has passed, we have more documentation. We have a better idea of what the needs and what they would like to serve, but maybe we can come to a compromise.
And I think the other part of that is, um, you know, these are long distance transfers. And the EMS district looks at it as they're going to lose a lot of money on this, because most of these are Medicaid patients. And that Medicaid, the, the reimbursement for that mileage is, is very little. So that's, you know, a greater conversation at the state and the HCA, or maybe with the MCOs or Carleon in order to find some dollars to help pay them. And then they might be a little more amenable to bring it in, you know, sending one ambulance and then calling in their reserves and their, you know, because they're supposed to have people that can come in if, you know, multiple ambulances go out.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Aaron, I think. Anything else from yourself?
Nope, that's it, and I'll, I'll be back at two.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Great. So I see we have Casey is leaving, hi, see if you had anything else and Carmen, do you have anything?
No, I just want to say to everybody, it's been quite a week, it's been a lot of work. But amazing to watch everybody come together and come through what we've been able to cover. You know, I, I see our public works department in the city, everybody gets bashed because they're not on the roads. I know for a fact that they are, it's just interesting.
So the public can hear you, please. Thank you, because it is important.
Right. So in the challenges that the jail has faced, um, you know, all the departments come together. We were out there in the middle of the night working on things, trying to get things done. And, and the public has to understand that we do the best we can under the circumstances we face. Deputies, I had deputies out, uh, cutting trees out of roadways. I had, you know, deputies coming in and helping meet up with Rob so we could get the supplies for the jail that we needed. It's a community that comes together in the time of need. And it very much frustrates me to see the bashing that goes on, on the keyboard warriors. People aren't plowing, they're not doing this, well, we all are, there's just thousands of miles of road and only, you know, so many people. So, um, kudos to everybody who come out and worked through this, whether they were working from home or not. I think that with the thought, who knows what's to come next? But we've overcome a lot and we'll learn from it and do better next time, that's all we can hope for. And hope that Mother Nature, um, gets on some Prozac soon.
She was mad, she was very mad, yes, she was.
Yes, she was.
Angry to work with, hey, and I have to commend you guys for how you all work together. You know, the communication that went on and EMS is not in this room, but they're still working. And it's untold hours and no sleep and I saw and, and dealt with a lot of things they were going through too. And it was incredible, the way you all kept everything going.
And it is a struggle, I mean, you know, the jail faced challenges that we've never faced before, um, but we figured it out. Was it all ideal? No, but we got through it, so.
I think we can say you have to be tough to live in Clickatack.
I agree. And we all made a choice to live here, so we all got to figure it out, so, but thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Wow. The National Weather Service has issued a dense fog advisory for the White Salmon and I believe this area until two PM today, so.
So hurry up, hurry up and go away.
I know it wasn't a fun drive this morning.
No, I want it to be gone before everybody goes home today. Anything else?
Um, not on HCA. And I think between the HCA and everything else, I covered the LSC meeting unless there's any questions from my seatmates. A lot of what Zach said, you know, um, the WASAC succeeded, they got all their pri- priorities done. And so now it's like, well, what are we focusing on? And so it's right now, we're being reactionary. Um, and then the question is, is what are we going to be tackling this next, next year? And, um, a lot of time was spent on, you know, how we pick, um, what projects we're going to tackle. But, um, one thing I wanted to bring forward, um, to the board and make sure, um, we're all in agreement is, we saw the white paper that came out on the taxation on renewables. And, um, the white paper is a good place to start. And, um, I would like to, to put that forward as one of the priorities for next, um, next biennium. Is getting that fixed, if my seatmates would have agreed.
Mr. Christopher?
I guess I would say I would encourage ideas on how to fix that. And I would be very curious to see who will be at the table. Discussing and engineering ways to fix that. Hopefully a whole different crew than was at the table on the last time it was tried to be fixed.
Yeah, I, I figured likely, um, we'll have to take a, a very active role in that. And then also bring in, um, the assessors. It's not something that just we can fix, it's something that, that we have to bring the assessors in on. And then, uh, make sure that the legislation is coming from, from in essence WASAC and not coming from industry. As we saw where a lot of that discussion went on the last turn.
Yeah, a second go around on this is good and I, I would say yes, I think that should be a, a priority that we bring forward. We get a lot of questions from the public on that too.
We do, and, um, and then any other priorities, um, that my seatmates would like, um, that, that you guys would like to see. And maybe we can get started with white papers so that, you know, in the meantime, we're, we're pushing that, so that's moving forward.
Great. Anything else today, Mr. Christopher, for you for this morning session?
The only other main, the, the big, you know, we agree on almost all things, you know, I think the only thing that, um, at the WASAC meeting that there was really disagreement between large counties and small counties was that small engine rule. And we actually took it to a vote, um, on whether to be opposed to it or just leave it as concerns or other. And, um, the staff recommendation was to remain with concerns so that we can go in there and try to get more fixes done on it. Versus if we're just opposed, it kind of takes us out of the conversation, they're like, well, we're going to do it anyways. From the WASAC perspective and, um, being that, you know, the big counties have their views. The vote was to remain concerned so that they can try to fix all of the issues with that.
Good to know.
And, and I, and, um, I did say though, that, um, I was with, uh, Amanda McKinney from Yakima County that, um, tying legislation to another state's rules, um, that was, that was too far. Because they could change it to whatever they want and then we'd have to follow suit.
And I can't tell you them off the top of my head, but I had heard about two others that were from another state that were potentials that we're trying to follow, so. Yeah. Not a good way. Okay.
And my other update, um, the Hood River Bridge, uh, received two hundred million dollars in an infra grant for the, um, uh, construction and designing construction of the Hood River Bridge. That is almost the largest infra grant in, um, the US, um, in the history of infra. It is, um, it's really amazing, uh, two hundred million dollars is a lot of money. When there was only about one point five billion in the whole nation. I can, uh, the infra, I will, for the public, the infra was created, uh, by Senator Maria Cantwell. You know, back in twenty fifteen. And, uh, between infra mega rule, um, you know, I five got six hundred million in the mega project. The mega program was created by Senator Patty Murray, infra was created by Maria Cantwell. Having legislators at federal delegation, um, that is, it, you know, they are at the top of, uh, you know, they're the chairman of theirs committees pays off. I hope to have, um, for tomorrow, there is, um, a Q and A, um, for Facebook Live on the Hood River Bridge. Well, we'll be, we'll be able to answer questions, but, um, I'm hoping by then staff will be able to get me the information on, if that two hundred million dollars, if we had to take a loan out to pay that, how much that would raise each trip across the bridge. You know, just paying that off over thirty years, you know, and then including in, uh, interest on that. It's, uh, it's a huge, huge mark. At this point, we, we now have, um, uh, three hundred and twenty million dollars in federal and state grants that are appropriated, um, or, um, baked in. The overall bridge, um, total is five hundred and twenty million. And with our three hundred and twenty, uh, we only have twenty from Oregon. And in the twenty twenty-five session, um, we are expecting a, um, transportation package much like Washington did. Where we got to seventy-five from Washington. And so when we get up there, you know, if, uh, the goal is a hundred and twenty-five million from Oregon, a hundred and twenty-five million from Washington. And then the federal government was, you know, two hundred, the Fed stepped up. You don't see that very often where they step up before either state has put in their full share, which is huge. Because now Oregon is going to really get pushed to come to the table with theirs. And then, um, what we'll use with the rest of the dollars is, um, a federal TIFI loan. We had, you know, a big, um, bridge meeting yesterday, um, uh, where even the, the detractors, the people who said this will never happen, you know, before I die, uh, even they are saying there's really no chance that it won't happen.
That's awesome, turned that corner.
And I can also say that the, uh, yesterday was the final applications for the, uh, progressive design build contractors. And we had three applications submitted by five o'clock, we were expect, we were hoping for three. So, um, the, um, engineering group will spend the, about the next month working on picking, uh, one of those to move forward. So it was probably one of the best days I've ever had.
Big burden off, it'd be interesting to see the design finally.
Yep.
Yeah, that's great.
So, um, any questions?
You know, um, Maria Cantwell and her staff are very attentive to our county. And since I've been here, I've sat through many meetings with them, coming in to see where we're at, what we need. I'd like to send them a thank you card from our board, if we could.
So, the, uh, and we're talking for the bridge.
Correct.
If we, I would say, you know, uh, we had both senators submitting letters of support. We also had, um, Representative Newhouse.
Okay.
Representative, uh, Maria, uh, Glusim Camp Perez. If we, if we send those letters of support, I think we could send one individually to each of them, uh, or letters of thanks, um, from Clickatack County. I, we, you know, we're going to do it from the bridge authority, but I think the county definitely should as well.
Could you give that list to the girls, uh, email it to them, make sure we don't miss anybody?
And I guess the next question would be is do we want to send individual letters, um, to our Oregon delegation as well, because they all supported it?
Whoever needs to thank, that was a big deal.
Mr. Christopher, are you in favor of that?
Well, thank you for asking, yes.
Yes, you're in favor. Thank you. Okay. Any more business?
All right, if you have any questions on the bridge, I'm happy to answer them or sign in tomorrow, uh, for the Facebook Live event, it's at five o'clock. Uh, you can go to the, the Hood River Bridge, um, I think it's hoodriverbridge.org and it's right there, you can click the link. I can also send the link if somebody wants it.
Thank you. So if we have nothing else, we can adjourn for lunch?
I, yeah, I mean, we've, what are we going to do really from one o'clock to two, do you think we're going to fill that in all the way or?
Would you like to just keep going forward and then?
Well. No, I mean.
How do you feel about coming, having lunch and coming back for, uh, WSU program, I have a conversation? And then we.
For me, I don't need an hour and forty-five minute lunch, so if we want to cover some of this now, I'm fine with it.
Sure, that's great.
Well, we still have our Board of Health meeting at two, so we're kind of, and that's, we're stuck doing it at two, so. But I'm fine with just going now, you know, because either way, you're going to have it one side or the other.
Okay. So in, um, we're going to move to unfinished business, we'll move it forward. We have two items, the first one is WSU program menu. And we've been discussing, um, our continued contract with WSU for services within our county. Of course, everybody loves four H, that was, uh, not a question, uh, going forward in the future to, uh, keep that contract in place and keep moving. But we have a chance to, um, make decisions on the other, um, items that WSU can supply to our county. And we had shared a, uh, list of what was available from WSU. And we also received, uh, a packet on what our WSU representative Hannah Bruce had been working on over the past years. And, um, thick packet, uh, she's been very busy and has extensive education and can offer a lot of help in our county. Did you receive that packet, Mr. Christopher, okay, did, were, did you have time to go through qualifications and see? And kind, kind, do you need to, do you want to look at?
Oh, I was, I've got what, an email, but it looks different than what you have on yours, I've got four pages.
Oh, this, go ahead, this is two that she sent as a, um, email to me.
Maybe there's two.
Yeah, there might be two of them, one was big and one was small, you're right.
Uh, I don't see the other. I don't see the big.
In the bigger packet, she listed year by year from about two seventeen, two thousand seventeen forward of items she'd worked on. And she'd not only worked for Clickatack County, but Skamania County and also in Oregon and also on many, many, many boards, um, fielding things. So, um, I kind of looked through it and looked at, um, what applies to our county and what applies to things that I think our people would be interested in seeing as services. And I went back to the WSU list and kind of highlighted, um, programs that I felt people, that I'd heard from people, they were interested. And we, we hadn't had them running for quite a few years. And there were also, um, community and economic development items that I felt would be helpful. Some things that we'd talked about in the past were citizen surveys and needs assessments. And, uh, that's something that we didn't feel we could undertake without hiring a contractor. So that's something that's on the list that WSU can help with. Emergency management and extension disaster education, uh, that's something WSU would help with, would help us prepare better emergency management plans. Something that I've talked to our EMS service about that we, we don't have a lot of things in place. And it's something that's on my agenda that I'd like to see us get, um, solid plans in place. Something else I heard today was grant writing. And that's something that she's been involved in heavily in the past, in a lot of different places. So grant writing and possibly grant management would not be a problem through this WSU program. And that would help us maybe from doubling down somewhere else. Other programs that I heard about that hadn't been in our county for some time are master gardeners and food safety. It's been many years since Susan Kerr was here that we did some really cool, uh, food safety programs. A lot of people are interested in canning and preserving these days. And so they are able to set aside and have nights where they allow women to come in and help you with, how do we process foods and can them safely? Those are just things I was interested in, I don't know what you two had. Childcare development had also been heavy in Hannah's background, plus WSU. You know, we're working on those, uh, boards to try to help with Gabby, Gabrielle and some others to move into, uh, childcare development. And I think I saw in Hannah's resume, she'd already been on a couple of those boards. So maybe for us, we need to formalize more of what we would like that position to do and reach back out to Hannah and to, um, WSU to see how they could fill those gaps for us of things. I'm kind of looking for things that uh we already have this relationship with WSU. What could we plug into there that we didn't feel like we'd been able to fill in the last few years? There's a big coordination for homelessness, uh drug abuse. Uh we've been having those. County city meetings uh with all the programs at the table, trying to figure out where do we go? What do we do with this? Um there's a lot of grants available. There are a lot of money out there, but it takes somebody with expertise and time. Uh that might be something we could ask for. Could you help us in that section? Uh not only design some programs, but help us find that money. Cause that that's the bottom line. It always comes down to, we can think up good ideas, but we have to have the money to implement them, so. Grants uh even like um Erin was talking today. Um and I was thinking, is there a possibility of coordinating through the WSU program to help with some of Erin's holes that she needs to fill? Mr. Christopher, do you have any thoughts?
Yeah. I do not like the idea of WSU. Uh having a role in county governments, grant writing or facilitating of our departments run. Do I respectfully understand where you're going, but I disagree.
And in the past, just so you know, it was a large part of their history in the past through McCade and other resources that we're connected with. Uh they have cooperated with that role already, helping find those grants and rent those grants, but. We're heavy in McCade as I'm on the board and Richard works with McCade. Uh so we have a lot of coverage at McCade. I was just thinking if we could alternatively pu- plug that WSU person. With expertise in somewhere else where we don't have the personnel and we're talking about hiring somebody. Um if we have somebody that has um grant writing expertise and background. Uh we could plug them in and a lot of, lot of our departments that are lacking. They'd like to apply for money, but they just don't have time. And I hear it from the sheriff even. We're always continually asking them to go out for grants and they don't have the staff. And management then becomes a burden uh after you get the grant too. So I was hoping to look for a way to increase that in that we haven't got plugged in. Your thoughts, Mr. Anderson?
I just only was only briefly able to go over the uh the resume.
Yeah, it's very extensive.
It's very, very extensive. And um I know that uh Ms. Brass has been very effective at getting grants in the past. Um and her writing skills are absolutely amazing. I I guess from my perspective, I need to know, we we have our budget. Um we have uh an agreement with WSU. We are talking, we're now moving to talk about the person kind of and what we want that person. I mean, I'm saying person, but it's the job. Um to do, but don't we need to finalize the agreement with WSU? I mean, wasn't our goal to get that done by the end of twenty twenty-three for twenty twenty-four? I understand, like, we can ask for different. Different directions, but I don't think that's gonna change the costs. Per se, you know, unless we're bringing in somebody else or there's gonna be something else that comes in.
And that that was my conversations with WSU. They needed to know where our focus was. So that they could adjust within the contract and the money we already have, or if they had to find somebody else that would. Uh so they had to ask us to choose what is our direction? Where do we wanna go from here? Uh because we were kind of the ones that stated we didn't know what they were offering or what they did. Um so we opened up that conversation. Uh four H uh will not be a split out contract all the way per se. So in order to move forward and and get our four H contract all the way done, we have to pick things from this menu and say. What is Click Attack County's focus on what we would like our relationship to be with WSU? What are we looking for for them? And they're willing to offer any services off this menu. We just have to decide within our range. What are we, what are we interested in? And I think if we pick and then have further conversations with them, they'll tell us if we're in. Within our budget range or not.
Right, and I guess I'm confused because I can go through this list and say. Uh sure, master gardener is great, animal agriculture is great. Uh you know, farm management, great, pest safety, great. You know, uh and and I can go, but I would go into emergency management, disaster education. That that's emergency management's area of expertise, not a teacher's area of expertise. So I I disagree there, but I also look at this list and I look at Hannah's list and I don't see broadband on here. I don't see PPE distribution expert on this list. I don't see childcare board. I mean, if she wants to do those things on her own accord, as a citizen, I have no problem.
They were in her second packet.
As it, well, I'm just going off of what I was giving.
Um I'll make sure.
On the things that she's worked on and and a lot of these things are not on this list, so to me. I would like to have this list and check off the boxes that we feel we would like that person to do. And those are it, and any of those little side. Things that she wants to do as a citizen, feel free, but not as your WSU position.
No, that's what she's done.
It's on the WSU report.
Um and I would disagree with emergency management as a teacher. Hannah, i- if she ends up being that person, has a a broader thing in her resume where she does qualify to. Assist with our department. She would not be directing our department or um. She would maybe fit into, I'm just saying, fit into a place maybe that would help them with grant writing, that would help them attain some more funding. That's where we could plug Hannah in with her background that I saw. Um it isn't that I would expect her to be managing a department at all for us. And I know citizen surveys were something you had explored earlier. But we we couldn't do them. We couldn't plug the money into them, so uh we do have a resource with WSU. If we want citizen survey, we have. Somebody that's capable of doing it through WSU. Yes. That's okay. There's so many now.
So we used to have master gardener program and we used to spend money on it, I believe. Um and we didn't have the money and I think the the um the Dow still has master gardener.
Do you?
But I don't think anybody, anybody else does. Um would I like it?
The attendance is a problem.
Right. Would I like it? Sure. Are we doing it? No. Are we gonna spend more money to do it? Uh that's okay.
Those are just my suggestions.
Okay, so the ones you put in yellow.
Those are just things that I liked and that I would go to um and that I've heard people ask about. Other ones were suggestions because I'd seen holes in our department struggling. Uh we even talked about um. Uh scanning today. And I know when you start scanning, you have a problem with, you have to have the employee. And you have to have a dedicated person that that helps do that scanning. Document retention.
What does scanning have to do with WSU?
I think that it is a business. Background entity that that person from W supplied by WSU could go into a department, work with the director and they can say. We're using your time and energy because we want to put all of these scans on our um. Whatever way we choose to scan for that department. And that could be the the plugin person that stops that department from having to use their employees for that.
I don't think that's a service that they offer here.
It's within, I think if we ask for it, it is within uh the business background service that they're capable of. If you take a person. With a specific background and has education in managing um administrative things for businesses. They're certainly capable of scanning if that's something we need to fill.
Well, I would be uh very intrigued if WSU signed off on their employee doing scanning for us for the year. I would, that would be, uh I would, I would be.
It's it's more than just standing at a machine and acting like a secretary scanning. Uh you have to have a little bit of background expertise to understand what documents are crucial, what are not. Be able to help that director work through how to preserve crucial documents.
So. When I look through what Hannah wrote for what she's been doing, which is what we were all looking for because we didn't know. Um when I look through it, she's been doing a lot of these different things. Um. You know, working with the Dow's Mountain Ranch. Well, that's animal agriculture. That's rangeland management, you know, farm management. She's just been on pesticides. She's gonna cut sock crop and soil, food safety. Um you know, she's doing a lot of these things. And broadband access, digital initiatives, digital equities is one of the example programs and she's been working on that. I mean, I guess.
I think where my frustration and frustrations from the past with the program came and people, you know, said, we don't know what's being done. Is um we're doubling down in many places. We've all agreed, we have economic development. We have a high concentration working with McCade. Those are all things Hannah listed in her. Resume that probably aren't necessary for us to have her doing. And if we could utilize her skills in other places. To get us something rather than hiring contracts or just not doing things, we're gonna get better off using that money at WSU for that. Pesticide things and stuff. We've had our weed control things. But we we also have heavy burdens um in childcare, trying to get those programs up and running. We don't have the money and we don't have the um employee to sit on those boards or work those things through for us.
It's in, you've been sitting on them.
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
Um I guess my my whole thing is if your thing is. Isn't, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we're doubling down. And we have multiple people, then to me, it isn't so much adding, we wanted to do this, this and this. You need to go through that list and tell me what you don't think she needs to be working on anymore, because we have somebody currently doing it.
Correct.
Uh so that to me is step one, not, you know, if. If this board feels that McCade is working on broadband or the broadband team is working on broadband. Our economic development is working on broadband. We don't need WSU working on broadband and you wanna remove broadband, boom, I need to know it. If, yeah, I mean, if if you feel there's double down, we need to know what areas.
Well, and that's.
We can't add more duties. I need to know what duties we're removing. So I know how much time there is to add what more duty.
And I have suggested several that we've doubled down on and I, we've had this conversation a couple of times already. We've, we know we're doubled down in economic development and some other areas. I'm trying to move past that now and pick what we're not doubled down on. And if we go through the list and say. I don't see where we're offering that. Um like I checked master gardener because that was important to me. Uh Mr. Anderson brought up that that was a program we had and yes, it's important to a lot of the people in our county. They. They love it and they show up, but it did cost us more money. So that gives that a negative for me that that probably would not be one we'd ask for. Then we have to stay within our parameters. So finding things on this list. So we can quit kicking the can down the road on this contract that is now due. We need to find some things that we all agree on, so we can say back to WSU, this is where we'd like to focus. And then they are going to write us up the contract.
Right, I don't disagree, but we can't add ten more things to the list when Hannah's already got a full-time job. You you have to actually remove things from the list if you're gonna add new things to the list.
You're you're going to have a new contract. And if you add the things to the list that are focused, that's where WSU will focus this program. That's old history.
So you're saying ignore what she does.
No.
Go through this list.
What she does has sunset. What she does has sunset.
Okay.
The contract is over.
So should we just go through these things one at a time and and get a consensus on what we think should be worked on? And then everything that's not checked off is not something we want WSU to work on. Is that your point?
What I, what I'd like to do um is, because it's the first time I've seen this. I just saw the special projects and this is far more.
Okay.
What I'd like to do is go through this and then under each one of these, put it in there. So that we know what's been done for the last few years under each one of these, because I don't want to make just a decision and be like, oh, I don't think we need the. Somebody else is doing this.
Right.
When we might not actually have someone doing that, you know, it might be a little section outside. It's kinda like. I look at the WSU thing a lot, like how the the um how the other WSU part is. We do a portion of economic development. Lorena works in a different portion of economic development that works with a much smaller organizations on a much. You know, much more personal scale than the big economic development that our staff tends to do. And I wanna make sure that before we're making decisions, we know exactly what's been done and where it fits into these. And then we can say if there's any that we want to go away or if there's any we don't want worked on, because I I I need.
And I'll make sure that you get a copy of this. Um I agree, because that's what I did with this document.
Oh, you already did?
Yes, I did. And that's how I made my choices here.
Okay.
So. Cause the only documents I have is the WSU handout you gave us last time and what's in the email from Hannah. Uh that was sent to the board of her four pages of what.
At least you have that.
And structure.
One from Hannah with the two documents attached. You haven't. Okay, let me see if it didn't come to you and we will.
So if you could uh print and.
Yeah.
Distribute, then we can have a better conversation. Um because that's, that's where I was at. I understand Hannah works on things that aren't necessarily written on this list. Uh and I'm not saying those things are bad. Some of them are very good. And I don't want to say, don't do that when I don't know what it is, which was the reason why I wanted to go through. What she does and say, okay, I don't know that we really need you working on the broadband equity group unless you wanna work on that as a civilian.
Mm-hmm.
Um it that's fine, but don't claim it as a work thing. We want you to spend your hours working on, you know, farm management. You know, kind of a scenario. Um but I don't know how many hours she works on this thing or that thing and you look at her list there and I have to try to match it up. To WSU's list and a lot of things just don't match. So it's like, I'm, I would be making decisions without all the information I didn't make the decision.
Great. I'll make sure everything's forwarded again and it gets to you.
Um okay.
Kind of like the food, all the food groups. I mean, we have nine million WAG apps around this county and food banks and everything else. Do we really need WAG app as a part of that? Maybe. I mean, if she wants to serve on it as a civilian. Uh but is that really a WAG app function? Is WAG app bringing money to the table?
Okay. Uh we'll work on that um hopefully over, a little bit over lunch, maybe. Uh you, would you like to move on?
Uh yes, let's move on. We have a uh application for the Click Tech. Technical Committee Board, Patrick Hayden.
Um this is what I mentioned last week that uh we have um one member of the TC. Who's moving on. I think she's going to work for the Forest Service. Um and so the tribe is putting forward uh Patrick Hayden's name. And so my motion would be to approve.
Um I saw the applicant. I understand it is the tribal consultant. I do. Have concerns. Uh once again, appointing someone that, I guess I need to make the motion.
Yeah.
Yes, sorry. I didn't mean to mess you up. I will make the, I will second the motion in order to have discussion.
Thank you. Discussion, please.
Thank you for my out of order comments. Uh being corrected, I appreciate that. Um no, my concerns are. Um out of county residents uh being on our advisory committees. I I have a problem with that. But as this is the Yakima Nations uh representative. Um I am not going to intervene or uh take issue with who they want to serve as their. Um personally is on, I wish. I wish they could find somebody that actually lives in the county, but um. Yeah, that was, that was my only concern, not that the person's uh qualifications or anything else, so I I have no problem and I will be going to approve.
I I guess I can give, if Chair allows. Um in the technical committee, you do not serve the organization. You serve the profession. Um, we have had many members of the technical committee um, over the years that might live in Hood River. But work for the Forest Service, but there are hydrogeomorphologists. Where we don't have any that are locally. And so um. And when you vote uh, and you score and you rank, you don't um. You don't rank um. Your, your. Comments are all based on your technical skills and profession. And so that's, that's how it's designed. You, at the Citizens Review Committee, then there is um, organizations that are represented. But it, that's, there's, there's a flavor difference between the TC and the CRC. And that is all within our lead entity strategy and plan um, and requirements and bylaws and all that stuff.
And uh. Technical is really, really hard to find. It's, it's hard to find those people. We've looked for them before in the past for our county and it's tough. Um, and I can tell you, I saw in his resume that he works with David Lindley. And with Yakima Nation and they're housed down on the Clickatap River at Wakayakos. They have their shop and their building and their office. So I'm quite sure he's familiar with the Clickatap River and all of its attributes and its projects. And he probably drives in county to work at that office a lot.
But they said, I have no qualms about his professional attributes. I just wish. All the people that sat on all of our boards lived in the county.
But you seconded?
I did.
Correct. Any more discussion? Okay. Um, all those in favor?
I.
I. All those opposed? Hearing done, the motion passes for the. Click, Clickatap Technical Committee Board application for its new appointee, Patrick Hayden. And we'll have a letter to go to Mr. Hayden. Thank you. Okay, next week. Great. Well.
Now we just got to figure out what to do between one o'clock and two o'clock.
Um, you could work on the WSU.
I could work on the WSU. You gotta give me the packet of paperwork.
In your email box.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, we have things to sign.
Did we uh, want to come back at one for general discussion or do you want to? Uh, adjourn until or recess until two o'clock? What is the board?
If we came back at one and uh, do, do people have time for their lunch period to do the WSU? To look at that? Would you like to bring that back at a later time? Do you need more time?
I guess for me. Uh, I, I, this is great. Uh, we're making progress. I still want to focus on getting. The contract agreement between us and WSU because currently we're operating without a contract.
Right. And they will not do the contract until we have these into them of what we'd like them to provide to us. That was, that's why we're doing this.
Um, I would um. I guess I'll make a motion to recess until one thirty.
Mr. Christopher.
Okay.
Motion to recess till one thirty.
Uh, I will second the motion with a. Friendly amendment that hopefully everybody will have the opportunity. To look at this purple binder and have discussion on it when we come back.
I don't know. Yeah. I'm fine with that. Uh, I would just say that when we come back, we'll be in new business.
Okay.
Okay.
So uh, discussion done.
I have no more discussion.
All those in favor?
I.
I.
I. All those opposed? Motion passes to recess until one thirty with the. Coming back through into new business. Correct? Was it new business? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. We'll call the regular business meeting of the Clickattack County Commissioners back into order. So what would you like to start with? He has the purple holder.
Thank you.
Did you, you looked at it already?
I, I guess I will. Point out my concerns. Um. When. Uh, one travel for one individual is more than entire departments and staffs. Um, for one event. When we are in the financial situation we are currently in, I understand that I will probably. Uh, be the only vote. That doesn't feel like. Uh, it is appropriate, but I thought I'd bring it up.
You, you're correct. It is a fair chunk of change, uh, but it was also budgeted. And built into the twenty twenty-four budget. It was discussed for an entire year up until that and um. I would likely uh, make the statement that um. The meetings and the things that happened there uh, may just be the thing. That creates the creativity that helps us for the next years to come when it comes to budgeting. Um, and knowing that that's going to be probably the biggest thing that we deal with over the next years. Um, I'd say it's a, it's kind of like us uh, spending time going up to Skagit County trying to um, lobby to keep um. Uh, or advocate, not lobby, advocate for keeping contracts that are worth a million dollars. Um, I see this in that same realm that uh. The value that we're going to gain from it far exceeds the cost of going up there. I consider it investment.
Um, well, yes, and I remember when we had these conversations and I am thankful that. Um, it was brought forward to us, pre-brought forward to us and approved. It wasn't a arbitrary decision or just. I'd like to go to this conference. It is incredibly valuable. The, the knowledge and the classes that are offered at that are crucial. For government and it doesn't serve just our department or one department going to a conference. Uh, this conference going to serve that position for everyone here at the county for all departments. So I think it's a valuable conference. Um, worth what's being asked for and it was budgeted. It was pre-budgeted.
I, uh, thank you. I do understand it was budgeted. It is in the twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, it is a piece of the twenty twenty-four budget that I voted no on. Um. Which is why I believe I will be the only one not signing that document. Um, but that's for discretion. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
We need, we don't need a vote, do we?
No. Just need to sign.
Yeah, there's no vote that's needed.
No.
But I have no problem with you signing. Uh, I've been in meetings since we got out, so I have not had time to print out and go through that, that list. And I, and if somebody else did it and had time to go through the whole list, um. Um, I'd gladly use your list.
Mr. Christopher, did you have time to look at the WSU secondary documents that were sent to you?
I did.
Great. Do you have any more conversation? Okay, thanks. Here it is. I don't need them. Thank you.
I guess um. Has, you've got yours lined out here. Well, what your, let's call them priorities.
Okay.
Because I think things come up, you know, like. Um, cause I know, I'm sorry. I know that she's done a lot in farm management, crop production, soil health. She goes to the Eastern Conservation District and puts on, you know, when they do their annual meeting. I would hate to say, you know, like, we don't want you to not do this, but I would, I think it's better to say these are our priorities. And if there is something that we actually don't want you to do, we can make that point.
Okay.
Would that make sense?
Sure. And also if there's things that come up that are valuable that aren't on the priority that she feels are valuable. Um, I just want to make sure we never go over budget. That would be my only uh, like an extended cost unless it's pre-authorized.
I would think if you add more job duties. You might have an ask for my budget.
We might and WSU is going to do those calculations when we turn in.
That's what I was saying. If you were removing one thing and adding another, that's one thing. But if you're just adding more. I don't know that that will go over too well.
And uh, the, the last contract was fairly vague. All it said was. Economic development, community development and. What else was it? Was there something else that was in that contract? There, there were three things that were very broad. And so I think rather than saying we didn't know what was happening, I don't think. We reached out and really discussed what our priorities were. Mr. Christopher, did you come up with anything off of this first menu list from WSU that you felt like could be a priority? That you feel like a priority for the county?
I, again, unless we're removing things, I'm not willing to add things to the list because I believe there will be a higher cost for that. So if you, if you want to trade something. Um, and remove something to add something, I can understand that. If you want to try to add something, I'm open to hearing what you want to add.
So I think. Um, there's a little bit of confusion because the first contract actually had agricultural natural resources as a heading. And then uh, she did go ahead and work on uh, different things that she put in the resume that showed us what she'd been working on. And there was a second additive and that was community and economic development. And the same thing, she showed the task, she showed the group she was associated with. With the menu selection, we can actually go into that. Top heading and we aren't essentially taking anything away because we never prioritized anything last time.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. What, what items do you have checked that you would like? Uh, put in our topics. For that contract and then I can. Um, I see where you're coming from and, and may just agree outright. I may have other.
Well, I felt like we uh, do quite a bit with the Conservation District with our own. Uh, water resource issues, our animal agriculture, our pest management. Uh, rangeland management, farm management, pesticide safety, crop production. The only two things I saw in that list that could be offered that I felt like people have talked to me about before, why don't we have it any longer? We're master gardener and also I liked when they were here and did this food safety programs. Um, so those were two, my two picks out of that agricultural natural resources is what. I would say I'd like to see as a priority for Clickatap County to offer.
Now, you, you were saying food safety was canning. Are we sure that's not food bank? Kind of work?
Um. I do not know. I'd have to ask that question, but food safety uh, fell under. Uh, when they did it before, fell under safe management of home canning.
Make sure you don't get botulism.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then also ideas on how to do better preserved foods. And also temperatures in refrigerators, different temperature things that you need to hold foods at. It was just education on.
Yeah. Hey, do you have uh, the next um, block?
Uh, community and economic development. Jake, would you like to add into these or you want us to go forward? Okay. Community and economic development. I had community oriented public safety. Um, and I had added.
It's the, what is the community orientated public safety? Is that like neighborhood watch type scenario or what is it?
Um, we would have to ask for the detail of what they consider that, but I had written down uh, becoming a part of that. Uh, the bigger group that we have was Goldendale, the city of Goldendale and those meetings we've attended with WOG app and everyone. Uh, that if we had somebody attending that for homelessness, drug crisis. Um, that would save us from potentially using an employee's time there that.
Well, I don't know that the county has a role in what's happening in Goldendale. Nor do I.
Well, I see that.
Personally want to facilitate WSU getting involved in politics in Goldendale.
Okay, I'll put a question mark by that one. Um. I had have extensive conversations with EMS about uh, shoring up and creating emergency management. Uh, disaster plans and education. And that would have to be. Uh, we've talked about getting a larger group together to have those talks between. IT, emergency management, the sheriff, the health department. And moving forward and getting a solid plan set for this county. And I think this weather event showed us. Um, we need some protocols for different buildings. We need protocols for different departments. So they have a go-to. We had a few glitches and we covered them and we took care of it, but. It would be nice if we had a protocol book for everyone to follow, especially if we have a super, super big emergency. And this was just uh, first blush at what of an emergency really could look like. So I would be a fan going forward for Clickatap County and it was on my agenda for twenty twenty-four to start working on. What do policies and plans look like for our county during emergency times?
I, I guess I don't disagree. Um, I believe there's emergency management plans that are currently in place and if they need updated. Um. Or policy decisions need to be made. Um, I guess I worry who makes those policy decisions, an elected official or an appointed WSU person?
Yeah, no. Well, they would just be part of that board. We always stay the lead for our programs. They would be an additive to any of these programs.
It's, it's the part here where they're. If they're trying to educate the public for the plan that the county is currently already set, that's one thing. But if you want them actively involved in making the plan. Then I, I don't like that.
Okay. It could be, one, one of my ideas was at the table because they've worked on some of these items already. And can offer that background. They could be at the table to help guide the process. They could be at the table to help find. Um, grants possibly to support building that process. Um, I think, I believe they'd be an asset in that, uh, but we can move on to if you have questions about that one. Um, the only other one I came up with out of that group was citizen survey and needs assessment because that was one. We tried last year, but we really didn't have the funding for it. And in the resume, that has been done. By WSU, they're able to facilitate citizen surveys and needs assessment and do the reach out. They have background in it.
I guess my concern with that one as well. Is who drafts the questions that are sent to the public? Um, it could easily. I mean, the answer you get from a question base is based on how you word the question. And if there's any kind of a political slant. Um, in the asking of the question, you're going to get different results.
Are there any of these on these two lists that you're in favor of?
I, I guess I would say I'm very cautious. Um. Knowing what I know about. Current operation. To expand. And give more power and authority. Um, I mean, sure, don't master gardening, find food safety. If you're talking canning and it's specifically spelled out what these things are. Yeah, no, no, no problem. But like community oriented public safety, I, I didn't even know what that is before I put it down. I need there to be a, a, a description of what are they doing? Um, I don't, I don't want to just, I mean, because God, I can come up with things on both sides of the aisle for that one. Um, one of them could be a lobbying group to lobby against the posse. Community orientated public safety because they disagree with the current way we're doing public safety. So I kind of need things spelled out before I. just check a box. If you kind of get where I'm coming from anyway, I'm trying, I'm not in.
I hear you.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to not be obstructing. I'm just, I'm, I'm cautious based on my great knowledge.
Do you have? Any input, Mr. Anderson, that you'd like to start with?
Um, when I read the summary of accomplishments from 2022, um, and I look at things like, uh, the successful writing of a grant for the childcare committee, um, something that we get brought up on a regular basis. Um, when I look at, you know, there's been planning and progression over five years due to a 2017 needs assessment. And then over that time, continue to work on those things that fit many of those lists. But you know, you, as you go down through there, um, and for me, it's a bunch of stuff that, that we are not going to be involved in. You know, whether it's, and it's really detailed things like the, like canning, you know, or putting on many of the, um, oh, I was just, whatever, let that page go. Many of the presentations that are put on. Uh, and she focuses on the small farm dream. She focuses on, um, buyer seller. And she's focusing in a lot of these things that are economic development. But it's not economic development like what we do. It's economic development, like trying to get people who might be a good farmer, getting that to market. And she's working with individuals and groups and giving publications and, and giving these things. And and I'm totally fine with that. I mean, that's, that's kind of WSU's thing. It's kind of, it's, they're looking kind of like our S, you know, our SBDC person that's working individually with these people or in small groups. And I'm fine with all that. I don't, I don't need to make any changes. I don't have a problem. I guess, I guess where I'm coming with is I don't have an issue with the vast majority of the things that she's been doing in the past. I mean broadband, well, you know, I would usually say that's not something that, that I would have her working on. But yet WSU is working on a bunch of rural broadband stuff and is getting rural broadband dollars to do these studies and having our extension agent be plugged in with that coming off of what WSU is doing is not a bad thing. So in a lot of this, because it's most of the things that you end up having to work on is soft money things. And so you kind of follow where the dollars go and they change us from year to year to year. I really actually, uh, do like and appreciate, you know, Commissioner, um, uh, Zoller, you just brought up, you know, the needs assessment, you know, writing the question or, or, you know, doing something like that that gets out to the community over, how do you feel about this or whatever? Rather than us spending all that time and effort doing it, I think that that could be something that would work really good that we could ask for help with. Um, sure, I'm, I'm certain Commissioner Christopher is going to want to look at the questions before it goes out, but she could create the draft and do all the work and everything. And that's something that we don't have our staff doing or something else. I guess what it comes down to in the end though, is she is a WSU employee who we have no direct supervision of. We can ask her to work on these things. We put money towards her, you know, being here and working in the community. Uh, what I wanted when I first asked is I wanted to see what your accomplishments are and what you've done. And when I look between these two things, it's pretty darn evident that she's been working and doing a lot of things in this county that can't, that the county, the rest of county government has not done. And I can only say that's great. Because those are things that would never even come across my, you know, um, my desk, you know, like small farm dreams and, um, you know, agricultural marketing for small farms. That's not something we did when, you know, when we actually had a natural resources department. That's something we didn't get into. Even it's not something economic development got into. So that's kind of, it, it, it fills a role in a niche that I see that's there. Um, but again, I think we have a tendency to want to micromanage on this board and that's not my personality type. And I don't want to get into the micromanagement. Um, what I want to do is get the agreement back in place, uh, and go forth and do good work. Um, stay, and if there's anything that the board doesn't want her at all working on, we give that as a direction.
That's, that's about kind of where I'm at. Um, because we have no oversight and I think you're going to find it very hard that we get to draft the questions. Um, and if we have a problem with the wording that she's going to be like, oh, sure, no problem. Use your wording. Um, we, we have no oversight. Uh, I'm very hesitant to, um, put more there. And I, I would also think that if you think that WSU is going to draft a survey and send a survey to 20,000 residents that we all know would cost $20,000 and they're going to do it for free. Um, I, you might want to double check that. Uh, they might make some poll that can be thrown on Facebook that anybody in Seattle can click and give you skewed results. I'm not interested. Um, I want to make sure that the poll is actually answered by people that live here. And so that's why I'm, I'm gravely worried about putting things like that in that position. Because if you throw out a Facebook poll, which I can do tomorrow, and sh- send it through Seattle's yuppie Facebook groups, I can give you 24,000 answers, but it doesn't mean they came from us. Hence the reason why when you go through a polling place, they can cross reference the results with the voter database to make sure you have accurate, unbiased answers. I'm not, I'm just not interested in a department that is previously shown they are political in nature, having more things to get political nature over.
So I think, um, in the interest of the, getting this contract back to WSU so they can get it in place and we preserve 4H, which we all agree on and the public agrees on. And hearing Mr. Anderson and hearing Mr. Christopher and Mel doing the two, um, I think if we go back to the contract, um, with WSU with, um, they send the person to do certain things within our county that they pick. And they're working for the best of Clickat County, trusting under WSU's supervision that that's happening for our county. Uh, the only thing I would like to ask is that we build a good relationship with this person. And I would, uh, not micro imagining, I, I'd really like to hear from them and I'd like to have them come in. You know, maybe not once a month, once every two months, once a quarter. Um, and tell us the good things we're doing. So we, we don't have to have this conversation again about that. We didn't feel that we knew, uh, what was going on out there. And then we maybe potentially could suggest things at that time and build that relationship and that trust with them that they work towards things that we are really excited about.
I, I can agree with that. I would love to have a quarterly update with like this last email list that, um, that I did this, I did this, I did this, I worked with, you know, uh, Ms. Rowe at WAGAP for the childcare thing. It, it allows me to see those things and backcheck that data.
Okay. And status quo on the dollars in the?
We already, we built and passed a budget and that budget, I believe, was a hundred thousand dollars and that included everything. And I believe that was a reduction um, from what the total was before. Um,
I just, when I have this conversation.
Gin's not in here, so.
So my answer to that is still the same. If we can, I have no problem funding 4H fully. If we can put, and I spoke to the WSU director or chief, whoever he is high up, um, that if we can put budgetary items for pens, paper, stamps, gas, all that other stuff in the 4H program, but that the 4H coordinator does not have access to those budgetary lines. I have no money or I have no problem putting money into the 4H program budgetary lines. Um, I have.
Did you say that the 4H coordinator has no access to?
No, the 4H coordinator does have access to, but the
Extension.
Extension coordinator, um, does not. Um, and he fully understood that. It's time. So I don't know if it's possible, if there's, once we pay the 4H person and pay Hannah, if there's an extra $8,000 in our hundred thousand dollar budget that we can put under the 4H program that Hannah's direct supervisor, Harley's direct supervisor, I can't remember her name in the 4H world, has the oversight over that of which Hannah does not have access to those bars numbers uh, or signing her own receipts. Um, then I'm fine with it. If, if it comes down to where Hannah has access to those bars numbers, I will be opposed to anything other than, uh, just based off, um, previous budgetary issues.
Well, that goes a whole long ways into, uh, what Commissioner Zoller was talking about, um, fixing relations with the person. Just being facetious for anybody who's listening. Um, in our previous contracts, it was one contract and our agreements, like all the other agreements that I understand with all the other counties that we've seen. The county pays for the wages, but the county is also expected to pay for uh, a place for them to work and the accessory units for that, like pens and paper and stuff. Many counties end up paying for their vehicle or their transportation, you know, of them doing their job in the county. Um, I, what I'm hearing is, is that Commissioner Christopher wants to fully fund 4H and, and I'm not putting words in your mouth. I'm, I'm reiterating so that you can fix it. Uh, if I'm wrong, fully fund 4H, um, fully fund the wages for, uh, the extension agent. Uh, eliminate any of the accessories for the extension agent. And then, um, if there's anything left over on the hundred thousand to fund the pens and paper and stuff in 4H. And then we would be asking, and this is where I'm coming in. We would then be asking Commissioner Zoller or Commissioner Christopher to go and do that negotiation with WSU, um, to get that in as part of the, the contract. Is that, is that in essence what?
That miraculously was correct. Um, in my conversations with, uh, head 4H or sorry, head WSU guy, uh, he fully understands that. He fully agrees with that. And he says other counties are doing just that. So it's nothing special. Uh, it's nothing that would be a one-off for us. And he's essentially got contracts just sitting on standby. Uh, willing to send over his first initial conversation was that we just fund the employment and not pens, paper or anything. I am throwing out the bone uh, of I have no problem funding pens, paper, boxes, gasoline, whatnot for the 4H program, because I have not seen any uh, fiduciary mismanagement from the 4H program.
I think I have that and I can reach back out to him. Any questions?
I guess my big question is, is does the hundred thousand fully fund both, um, positions?
Yes.
And how much is left over?
So we budgeted a hundred thousand in one line item, so it's not specific. Um, positions, as far as WSU positions are paid from WSU, um, we pay their benefits. And yes, it's potential that it would cover the benefits alone. Um, from what I can see and just quickly estimate. Um, and you had asked, was it reduced from prior years? Is that what the other question was? Yes. In 2022, it was roughly a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the budget. And 23, it was roughly a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, and now it's down to a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Any other questions?
But that major reduction from a hundred and eighty to a hundred and thirty is WSU paying for each.
That was the transition of that, of that.
That they offered to do. We did not cut it. Offered to do it.
Um, I am fine with Commissioner Zoller who's taken this on going and negotiating the contract. And, um, my goal is to ensure that, that the 4H coordinator and the cost to run that system, um, I see immense benefit to the residents of Clickat County, and I want to see that. And I also see immense benefits to the, um, uh, extension agent position. Um, and I want to see that continue. If WSU can take up the difference, because we're going from a hundred and thirty thousand down to a hundred, which means in order to provide the same level of services, WSU is going to have to pick up another $30,000. I mean, that's the easiest way and that's not including colas and everything else. So you'd think it'd be going from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty thereabouts with inflation and everything. So, um, I, but I want to give Commissioners Zoller all of the, um, wherewithal to negotiate on the best interest of Clickat County.
I would also, um, I'm sure they will, WSU will be aware that as they're working with you and negotiating or coming up with some kind of draft or whatever, it, it comes down to a board vote, which
Oh, yeah.
Um, regardless, might still be a two against one, but, um,
Yeah, we'll see what they come up with and we'll bring it back to you.
Next.
Yes.
Perfect.
One minute late.
So do we close the meeting?
You need to recess the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. So we need to.
Yes.
Until three o'clock.
Wait.
Or how long is the Board of Health meeting going to take? Do we have any idea? I think it does.
Yeah, we're scheduled for an hour.
But what do we have at three?
Nothing. We just have to go back to Board of Commissioners to adjourn for the day.
No, we can, we can just recess the Board of Commissioners meeting until Friday or until Thursday. We don't have to come back after that.
That would work. Or you, yeah, that works. Let's do that.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to, uh, recess the regular meeting, uh, until, uh, nine AM on January tw- Thursday, January 25th, 2024.
I will second the motion.
Any discussion?
Um, I would just like to add, uh, we have, uh, the Board of County Commissioners has a meeting this evening at six o'clock, right?
Correct.
For case of PETA, we're having that meeting, right?
Yes.
My calendar.
Yep. There's case PETA meeting tonight and then more than one commissioner may be attending the key leaders, uh, presentation on Friday, maybe. I don't know. Wanted to make note of that in case more than one did.
Okay.
I will second that very eloquently worded motion.
No, no, uh, the motion, we were just in discussion. So in discussion, I was just letting it not be known that we, we don't want to make that.
Okay.
A second discussion. You any more discussion?
You.
Okay. All those in favor?
I.
I. All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. Board of Health.